Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the June 9th work session of ISD 279. The purpose of the work session this evening is to build trust and teamwork to exchange information, and when applicable, to provide direction in order to facilitate efficient and effective decision-making at regular board meetings. We have a couple of topics tonight. First is the legislative update, the fiscal year 2021 budget, community engagement plan, and the fall 2020 opening of schools update. The outcome, the board members will be provided with an update as well as information updates on the budget, the engagement plan, and fall 2020 opening of school. With that, I would turn it over to Superintendent McIntyre for check-in.
All right, thank you Chair Ostaffy. Good evening, everyone. First, let's, if we could, just have the board members, I know it's a little tricky virtually, but let's have everyone introduce themselves. So someone, Chair Ostaffy, I know you've done that already. So, thank you, if the other board members could introduce themselves quickly.
Kelsey Dawson-Walton, school board member.
Tanya Simon. Tanya Simon, school board member.
Heather Douglas, school board member.
Jackie Mosqueta-Jones, school board member.
And Jessica has a personal family issue this evening and will not be able to join us.
And Jackie, you were a little soft in your volume. I don't know if, did anyone else have a hard time hearing Jackie?
I will speak up, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you. All right, and then also joining us tonight is our district cabinet members, and we have some other members of our leadership team that will be coming in and out of the meeting on the various topics. So, appreciate your patience as members kind of jump in on the meeting. And then later on in the agenda, we will also have Valerie Doslin from EVOL Consulting joining us. As a guest, we'll be providing the legislative update to the board later in the agenda. So, Chair Ostaffy, I'll turn it back to you for our agenda.
Okay, thank you very much Superintendent McIntyre. Next on the agenda is open board comments. And starting with this evening, well, quite honestly, over the last two weeks, there's been a lot going on in our community, and a lot of issues, a lot of anguish, a lot of pain, and some things people want to share. So, with that, we will start and go around for everybody to make their comments. There won't be any discussion, it'll be comments, and then we'll move on from every board member, then we'll move on to the next agenda item. And with that, let me start it off with Superintendent McIntyre.
All right, well, thank you Chair Ostaffy, and I just want to acknowledge this is a unique opportunity for the board for open comments at a work session like this, and it's really, like you alluded to, so much has occurred in our lives recently that it's really important we have the space, opportunity to share our perspectives tonight. So I'm grateful for the opportunity to share my perspective, and it's mine only, and I appreciate the opportunity to address our community and everyone that is involved in the school district. And I'm just going to begin with saying aloud the name George Floyd. I need to recognize his name in this space because his death has hugely impacted all of us and the members of our communities, our staff, our students. And as a, as a white male, I won't pretend to understand the particular level of grief, anger, or frustration that others are feeling and experiencing, although I will say that I continue to struggle with, with the homicide of George Floyd while in police custody and the events that followed and the hurt that's being experienced by so many. I'm struggling for the words to describe my own feelings and emotions and how to best support our system and the communities during this really difficult time. For me personally, as superintendent, I have very intense consciousness about what happened the night of Mr. Floyd's passing or death, and I feel extreme conviction in working together to eliminate the racial disparities in our communities and by extension in our schools. And I'm trying to find effective ways to take action on my commitment as a leader to our district and to ensure equitable student achievement for every student and really working towards creating environments where every child feels safe, welcome, and respected. We've all, we all see the racial disparities, including education particularly, but health, housing, income, and many others that are reflected through the children we serve every day. And I'm really thinking about what we are saying and what we need to say to our students, especially our African-American students, about this latest tragedy, with George Floyd's name added to what seems an unending list both here and across our nation. And the words are not enough, but words do matter. And I believe that this is a time for everyone to share how they feel, how they're hurting, how to express their strong desire for humane and decent treatment of our black students and our families, our colleagues, our friends. And I believe we can't sit in silence. We need to find ways to speak up, speak out, and remain vigilant in the fight against racial injustice. I personally strongly believe we need to demonstrate a compassionate commitment to initiate connections. I'm a big believer that strong connections lead to healing and initiate change. And as Osseo Area Schools, I believe we stand for and stand together against violence. We stand together against discrimination and oppression in all forms. And at this time that we stand together, it's to support our students, our staff, our communities as we heal together, as we continue to demand justice. I also wanted to share that I don't have all the answers. I want to do my part to share more of what we stand for and what we believe. I do promise that our district is completely committed to combating systemic racism and discrimination and ensuring that we are creating welcoming spaces for every one of our students and staff members. And in these really difficult, troubled times, we want Osseo Area Schools to be a place that is safe, a place that offers stability and support for each and every student and staff member. We're deeply committed to supporting every one of our students and every staff member through the core values of our district. It's imperative to our students and families and staff of color that they know we see them, we hear them, and they're supported and loved. And we know we have work to do, but I promise that in Osseo Area Schools, we're committed to addressing acts of racism, acts of violence, acts of discrimination, and other hurtful actions. And Osseo Area Schools will be a place where racist behavior will not be accepted. As we close out the school year and transition to a new academic year, I believe we will become better, and we will do that together. I also want to recognize that community trust is fragile, and I promise to continue to work tirelessly to earn trust, not only as superintendent, but in our school district. I also realize that until each and every child and every family experiences those desired experiences that have described above, we cannot be satisfied and must continue to move forward. So again, I'll say his name, George Floyd. And for us, that is how we could come together. And just last couple of comments before I wrap up. This, being my first year in Osseo Area Schools as superintendent, I would have never predicted our school year together would have gone the way it has. This year's been like no other, and we're already planning for the next school year and all the different scenarios we need to consider, given the continuing COVID-19 pandemic. So, in the meantime, I want to wish our students, our families, and our staff that they stay safe, and we very much look forward to when we can see everyone again in person. So, as I wrap up, thank you for allowing me to share my perspective tonight.
Thank you Superintendent McIntyre. I'm going to go as people are arranged on my screen. Jackie, would you like to make any comments?
I would like to yield my time to Kelsey Dawson-Walton, please.
Fine, we can go with Kelsey next. Can't hear you, Kelsey.
Just said good evening, everyone. You know, I really appreciate your words Superintendent McIntyre. I think that as I look at where we are as a community, there's so much unrest, and you know, I've said many times in these meetings that, you know, as a black woman on this board with four children in this district, it's really personal. I feel like, you know, we talk about, we want every student to succeed, and that's absolutely correct. And then, you know, time after time, when we have reports and we have data, it starts to show over and over again the true racial disparities that we're experiencing in our district. And so, I've made some statements on Facebook of where I stand on some things, but I do want to read a letter that, that I wrote along with Director Mosqueta-Jones around the, around the recent event. So, and we'll share this letter with our board too. So, addressing Osseo Area School Board colleagues and Superintendent McIntyre, as fellow elected of Osseo School Board leader, is we demand that the Osseo School District, including each of our colleagues on the board, immediately take action and address the impact the murder George Floyd has had on our students, district employees, parents, and community. Communities across the country are protesting not only the death of George Floyd, but also the injustice black communities have experienced over time. The Osseo School Board sees these racial disparities firsthand, whether it's, we hear about it from the classroom, funding decisions, contracting, special education, disciplinary actions, early childhood programs, English learner program, et cetera, the list goes on. We know that education is the key to unlocking dreams. We truly believe that. And the dreams of many of our black people in this country have been disproportionately snatched away because of systemic oppression in our educational systems, and we can do something about this. In order to bring any sort of healing and to regain trust, there needs to be dramatic and sweeping changes to the way we lead and implement our educational priorities, starting with our school board. We need to move from planning and discussing to action and commitment. We need to move from colorblindness to undoing racism by seeing race, naming race, talking about race, and moving forward policies to challenge a status quo. Our community's unrest has been displayed by hundreds of emails, student-led protests, community outcry, and the experiences of our black and brown students, employees, and communities throughout the years. This comes from our teachers, our alumni, our students, our community members, our parents, our employees, about, and I'm going to say a quote that we've received in many of our emails, "to unpack the privilege and dismantle the racism that occurs inside the district. Education has a power beyond what 279 uses it for." The change starts with the leadership at District 279. So, these are the voices we represent as school board directors, and these are the voices that are demanding actions and accountability, particularly for our black students. The time is now to directly address the systemic racism that has been experienced by many black and brown families in this district. We will not be silent, and we're not going to accept silence. Silence has historically plagued this district and this school board. We know that words aren't enough. Action, accountability, and commitment is what we need to advance our district and ensure we are truly one district. History is happening right now. You know, we are committed to standing firmly on the right side of history, and that is being made in these moments. So, our district has, we do have a history of segregation and racial disparities as described by a longtime teacher in her email to the school board and superintendent last week. We must create policies and practices that are intentional bull to address the racial disparities in every aspect of our educational system. So here's a few proposals that we believe can be immediate actions as first steps. A resolution at the June 23rd school board meeting expressing the Osseo School District's support of justice for George Floyd and condemning racism in any form in this school district community and examining how our own practices, procedures, and policies where we identify and perpetuate structural racism and white supremacy that predominates the educational system. Honoring George Floyd's life at the June 23rd school board meeting with eight minutes and 46 seconds of silence throughout the district that we communicate that. Issuing a board statement committed to black indigenous families, students, and employees of color. Increasing the voices of black indigenous people of color to dismantle racism in our school district. An example is creating a decision-making document that we've talked about a lot before that explains how and when decisions are made in order to influence them, for our community to influence them. Establish a black indigenous parent of color partner committee with the power to address structural racial inequity in our district. Stand alongside this committee to implement accountable actions, provide solution, and guide curriculum, culture, and equitable budget priorities, as well as disciplinary practices, strategic priorities, et cetera. Implement a student cabinet to provide feedback and input to the superintendent and board that is reflective of the demographics of our district. Ensure that there is adequate support for the new role of Assistant Superintendent of Equity. Commitment to having and listening and engaging conversations and sessions with our school community to discuss issues about race or experiences in the district to influence our priorities and bring our community together. Commit to a cultural audit every year, including the school board. Create a space to engage students, parents, staff, and community regarding student resource officers. Require board members and all leaders to address racial disparities directly in every policy, including training and accountability, and then identify ways to contract equitably in areas of construction, purchasing, transportation, et cetera, to ensure we are inclusive and reflective in our demographics and those we serve. So we call on you Superintendent McIntyre and our board colleagues to set a new precedent in how we support our black indigenous students of color and respond to the need of our community. And this is on behalf of myself and Director Mosqueta-Jones. So, thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you Director Dawson-Walton. Director Douglas, do you have any comments?
Sorry, I forgot to unmute for a second there. Yes, I do. It's kind of hard to follow that up. That was very well-written and well-thought-out. So, thank you Kelsey for sharing that with us. I just had a brief reflection of the work that we've done over this last year, and as I look back at the work that we have done, I recognize that we still have a long way to go and a lot of work that we need to do to break down the racial disparities within our district and within our community. I do have profound admiration and respect for each person in this organization, each student, each parent, and each member of our community as we have come together during these really unprecedented times. I know that as I recount the many wonderful things that we've done, I cannot account for everything because so much good has been accomplished in the last year, and we still have more to do. In the last year, we have taken some steps towards changing the policies to better reflect our district's mission, so we can better serve our students and families and staff. And as Kelsey already mentioned, we have continuous work to do in regards to our policies and procedures and how we operate as a district. I also wanted to recognize that in the last year, our staff has participated in professional development with the National Urban Alliance to support culturally responsive instructional teaching, modeling, and coaching strategies, instructional leadership, and improve school climate. And I know this is just the tip of the iceberg, to create the climate that we're looking for in our schools of inclusivity and breaking down those barriers. I know that, as Kelsey has mentioned in her letter that she, her and Jackie wrote, we do have racially identifiable schools, and while we identify them and take action through our world's best workforce and continuous improvement plans, it's not enough. We've asked our legislators to support our mission to eliminate racial disparities in academic achievement by supporting identifiable priorities, but that's not enough either. We need to continue to work harder to eliminate the racial disparities within our district. I know that there has been a lot of pain related to a post that I shared on Facebook on my personal page, and I want to acknowledge that I did not intend to hurt anyone when I shared that, and I did share a letter of apology, and I know that many people may not have seen that. So I just want to briefly say that following the homicide of George Floyd, I understand and regret that my social media silence conveyed a message that does not reflect my feelings or views. I was and do remain deeply saddened by the egregious murder of George Floyd. I see you and I hear you. I remain deeply committed to eliminating racial disparities in our district and cultivating a culture of inclusion and acceptance. Please continue to share your thoughts and experiences with me. I am listening. Thank you.
You're muted, Mike.
Thank you Director Douglas. Do you have a comment Director Simon's?
Yes, this has been an extraordinary time of challenge for our district, our families and our students from the impact of COVID, the challenges of distance learning, and the murder of George Floyd. Our families and our students have and are continuing to experience so much during this time. For me, I want to pause and acknowledge this, and I want to acknowledge that all of these events are experienced individually and as a community in very different ways and in wide degrees apart, confusion and impact. For me, my experience and my own personal history have caused me to pause and reflect on how many of the issues raised right now in our community when it comes to stereotypes, expectations, assumptions, and achievement have been a part of my own personal story and journey to where I am today. I know there are parts of my story that are similar to those that I hear in our community, and I know that there are some so different that I struggle to imagine myself in those stories. As I look at my role on this board and the work we have ahead, I'm also encouraged by what I've seen in this difficult time. I've seen support from our communities for rebuilding, restoring, and assisting our neighbors in Minneapolis and here in our own district as well. I'm encouraged by the leadership of our students and staff in making a difference, to listen and to act to help our communities. We have significant work that we are doing right now in our strategic plan and specifically in addressing the root causes that have resulted in a persistent achievement gap. This gap hasn't changed much despite our work against it. As we do this work now, we need to do something different, as has been discussed in our sessions and board meetings before today. I think this begins with continuing to hear directly from our students, our families, and our teachers to create real solutions that will drive a different outcome. To me, I would love to see our work include a culture of belonging in every single building, in a culture of encouragement and expectation of excellence for every single student. And I've seen that. I've seen that in our buildings, and I think we need to continue to learn from that and transplant that everywhere in our district. I know it's possible to drive change, and I know we have the people in our district and our community that if enlisted, and that's key, that we need to be enlisting people with different ideas. We need to be enlisting our students. We need to be enlisting our community. And Kelsey, I appreciated some of those different ideas that you have to do that for this specifically. And Jackie, that if we enlist those voices and those ideas, we can do this work, and we can finally move the dial for the benefit of our students. And as I think about the graduations that we are celebrating just this past week, we can really truly change to deliver on our mission for all students to achieve their dreams. Thank you.
Thank you Director Simon's. Let me finalize with a statement. And first, I want to thank everybody for sharing their very personal stories, their ideas, and their commitment to move forward. It's obviously very clear, you know, the homicide of Mr. Floyd was a horrific event. It rightly caused disgust and outrage in our communities. I personally was stricken with horrors. I watched him die on that video. I grieve for our community, as I grieve for the family of Mr. Floyd as we come to terms with the reality of the depths of division in our state and our country. We must work together to address and solve the problems that are negatively affecting the lives of our community members. I applaud those across the district, the metro area, and the country who are banding together to demand justice for Mr. Floyd and all others who suffer justice injustice in any form. I was also horrified as I watched the video of the truck driving down 35W toward the protesters on the bridge. Thankfully, none of them was physically injured, but the fear they must have felt will not soon be forgotten. We have many teachers and students and families who are on that bridge. I'm saddened that the post that was mentioned was insensitive to the anguish of those protesters in our community and did not contribute to our healing at that time. It's also regrettable that it has cast a pall over the work this board has been doing and must continue. Kelsey raised some very good points, but please know that Osseo Schools holds equity work as one of our highest priorities. It's been a priority for well over 10 years, going back some time, and as reflected in the board-approved strategic plans that we are working on together. We strive to ensure equitable student achievement for every student and to offer school environments where every child feels safe, welcome, and respected. We know, and I know, that many of our students and families are not experiencing those desired outcomes. It's very clear, and we've been reminded again, it is very clear that we have a great deal of work to do to deliver those desired experiences and to earn or regain the trust of those who have felt disenfranchised or harmed by district policies, practices, and/or people. I look forward to working with everyone on this call and every member of our community as we go forward to make that a reality. So, thank you. With that, I want to turn it over to our next agenda item, which is Valerie Doslin from EVOL Consulting, presenting on our legislative update. Valerie?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, board members and staff at the Osseo Area Schools. I'm really appreciative I was able to be here tonight and able to listen to this opening comments and conversation. So I'm just going to do a quick recap of session and what we know to be happening in the next week or so with a potential lead conference special session as well as a brief discussion on what we know today regarding the budget outlook. So, the 2020 legislative session ended on May 17th, but they ended with the prospects of special session very likely, which has become quite a common occurrence. They did, yeah, and I should backtrack a little bit and just reflect, you know, this last session was like none other any could have predicted, much like the school year was none other than what you could have predicted. You know, the session started February 20th. They met for approximately about a month, and then the COVID pandemic came to Minnesota, and we all had to dramatically change the way we operated in our personal lives and in our professional lives, and that was certainly the case with the legislative session. They went on a extended legislative hiatus rather than a short week-long spring break. They went on, I think maybe it was about a three-week or four-week-long legislative hiatus and only to come back to deal with legislation as it was related to COVID. So, for the month of March through mid to May, or first part of May, they did have some committee hearings remotely by Zoom or Facebook Live, et cetera, and they did have floor sessions. And while the Senate did meet in a floor session where members would come, they had to practice really severe social distancing protocols, the House did not meet in person. They met remotely, with the exception of a few members on the House floor. And the process that the House had to undertake created a lot of delays for legislation to get passed because they had to take a roll call because 95% of the members were doing it via Zoom. And so, the opportunity to pass a lot of legislation quickly was not really possible in the House. So when they went on their extended hiatus, they came back to deal with a few bills as related to COVID. So, things that weren't necessarily addressed by the governor's emergency orders or that needed an appropriation. or that needed an appropriation. So they passed several bills that appropriated funds for COVID relief for public health, as well as economic relief for small businesses, veterans, et cetera. Wasn't until the end of session that they kind of took up some of the less, well, urgent, but some of the less urgent bills that needed to pass by the end of session. So they passed some smaller bills regarding omnibus agriculture policy bills, transportation bills, et cetera. And they did pass a small education bill, House Bill 4415, which primarily addressed all of the different provisions that needed to pass to help school districts continue to receive funding for the formulas as if the school was being held in person. It originally started in the House, and it originally had a provision that required school districts to pay all hourly employees and contracted employees as if the school year had continued. That was a point of big debate between the House and Senate. The Senate ultimately prevailed on that. You know, they argued that the governor's executive order and the guidance that MDE subsequently provided addressed the issue of hourly workers, and it was not something that needed to be handled in legislation. And ultimately, the Senate prevailed. So House File 4415 did not have any controversial or substantive policy provisions outside of anything unless it related to COVID and was not covered by the emergency orders or guidance. So I mentioned a little bit about the formulas, but there was also the requirements related to waiving testing, as well as the budget forecast, as well as additional limited fund transfer flexibility, which was also reflected in the guidance that MDE provided. The legislature had finalized and agreed to a small omnibus policy bill. Again, it didn't have any substantive, or not substantive, it certainly had substantive provisions, but it didn't have anything that was controversial. All sides had kind of agreed to it. I will note that one, there was one provision regarding the expulsion or suspension of pre-K students. And again, all of the differences on those bills had been worked out. And so ultimately, though, the policy bill did not pass because of a debate on what was not included in the bill regarding respectful meal policies. And ultimately, they worked it out and took the bill up, but because the process in the House took so long, the House ran out of time to take up the education policy bill by the end of session. And so that ultimately did not pass. A couple other big pieces of legislation did not pass the end of session. One was a tax bill. The other one was a bonding bill. And so for those reasons, as well as the intent of the governor to extend his peacetime emergency powers, which he has to do when the legis, he can only do that, avail himself of that power when the legislature is in session. So it's widely presumed, although not confirmed, that the governor will call them back to special session on Friday, June 12th. His emergency powers expire on June 12th and 13th. And so he, in order to continue those, he will have to call them back so that he can issue that executive order, as well as to take up potentially a tax and bonding bill. But I will add that because of the recent, because of the killing of George Floyd, there has been a very strong push by members of the legislature to look at immediately ways to immediately address legislation, excuse me, legislation to address and reform policing practices. The POSE, the People of Color and Indigenous Caucus in the House and Senate unveiled a very broad proposal last week. And they have indicated that they will not vote for a bonding bill, which requires a two-thirds, or the majority, supermajority in order to pass. They will not vote for anything or allow anything to really pass unless these policies, these provisions are taken up. And so while the governor has indicated he's going to be calling a special session, and we have every reason to believe a special session will be called on Friday, I think it will unfold in a way that most special sessions don't. Usually, special sessions, they agree to all of the different bills that they will take up. They agree to not amend the bills. They agree to the date and time of the special session in order for that special session to be one or two days. And the reason why is they have to suspend the rules in order to fast-track legislation. And that, again, as I mentioned, requires a two-thirds majority. Now, there is not broad agreement yet on the proposals that the POSE Caucus and others are advancing regarding policing practices as reform. And so I think the special session will unfold in some kind of bit of, I don't want to say controversy, but certainly a difference of opinions or disagreement on how those different pieces of legislation should advance. So I don't believe it will be a one- or two-day special session. I believe that the House for certain will take up different pieces of legislation that the POSE Caucus is advancing, and that will have to, because they can't suspend the rules, as well as the legislation is expected to be fairly substantive, it will have to go through a normal committee process. So that takes days, if not weeks, or months. So there's still a lot we don't know about special session. We'll have more as things unfold over the course of this weekend next. One of the other things that happened just right before, or while the legislature was on this break because of the pandemic, the Department of Minnesota Management and Budget unveiled a kind of snapshot budget outlook as a result of all of the different challenges that the pandemic was providing. It's very unusual that MMB does a budget outlook or prediction outside of the November forecast, the November forecast and the February forecast. And going into session, the February forecast showed that we had a significant budget deficit or budget surplus. This snapshot that MMB provided legislators in mid-May showed that they expect our budget, Minnesota to have a budget deficit of $2.426 billion. However, they've said a lot could change over the course of the next six months. When the November forecast comes out, a lot of it depends on how the economy rebounds because of, the economy is able to reopen because of COVID. So it's a snapshot, but it's not a certainty at this point. They've cautioned that it's not an official forecast, and the one that we have to wait for is the forecast in November. But recognizing that, a $2.426 billion budget deficit is very concerning. And we don't, you know, legislators haven't indicated what that could mean, although it's possible they might try to look at some ways to address the budget deficit over the course of the interim. We, I think they'll probably wait until we get the November forecast to really work in earnest to wait on ways to solve that budget deficit. But a couple of things to consider. We do have $2.359 billion in our budget reserve. There's also a significant amount of money coming in from the federal government for COVID relief. And while that can't be used to replace funds or supplement state spending, it certainly can be used to help in address some of other with this snapshot. So I think all of those measures that the legislature and the governor have available to them, while possible, I don't think we'll see anything over the course of the next interim. Certainly, looking into session, most likely, it would be the aid payment shift as well. And then I just want to end on one note. Obviously, because of COVID, a lot of the different priorities that different organizations were advancing and the priorities that the legislature was starting to consider didn't really go anywhere, and everything kind of got stalled. But one issue that came up right before the pandemic was the piece of legislation introduced by Representative Wang and Senator Hoffman in the 2019 session regarding the election of school board members by ward in the Oseo Area School District. That bill was heard in both two committees in the House, the Government Operations Committee and Education Policy Committee, and it was passed and sent to the floor of the House. The House did not take it up prior to their adjournment. And as a result, if they were to advance it during a special session, a new bill would have to be introduced, and it would have to go through a process. And I have not been given any indication that it would be coming up during a special session. And if they, if the authors of the bill and supporters of the bill want to advocate for that next session, it will have to be reintroduced again at the beginning of the 2021 legislative session and moved through the committee process. So I hate using the word, the term "the bill is dead" because no bill is dead. It can always come back. But the bill that was debated and discussed this last two years cannot move forward any longer. A new bill would have to be, would have to move forward. That's it for my update, and I'm certainly available for any questions, and thank you for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you very much, Valerie. Board members, any questions? Let's start with Director Simons.
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Director Dawson-Malton? Can't hear you again.
Okay, it's because like I have these earphones on, so then I forget to, sorry. I don't have necessarily any questions, but I do want to thank Valerie. I mean, you know, this, especially this session, has been a little hard to follow just because of obviously COVID and what's hap, you know, what's happening with our communities. And all the priorities shifted a lot. And so I just, I'm so appreciative of you of keeping track of it and as being the legislative liaison, I feel, I feel like really in the know because, you know, as I'm trying to navigate some of this, I think you just, thank you for all of your updates and being able to kind of really highlight the areas that you know that our board is really focused on. So I just wanted to really thank you for all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director. Director Douglas?
Yes, I don't have any questions actually, but I did just want to say thank you to Valerie for such a thorough update and really keeping us apprised of everything that's going on as the situation has rapidly evolved and priorities have shifted. And what was once a top priority, you know, gets moved around because of everything with COVID. And it has been hard to follow, Kelsey. That's a good point to make, that it's been hard for us as board members who are involved in it to keep up with it. But I really appreciate how you were able to kind of give us this distinct version of what's happened so that our community members and staff have a good idea of everything right now and what to look forward to in the session and the next legislative session.
All right. Thank you, Director Douglas. Director Muscata-Jones, do you have any questions for us?
I don't have any questions from Valerie. Just thank you so much for your work. I really, truly appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, Director Muscata-Jones. And Valerie, yeah, very much appreciate it. Read all the daily updates, the weekly updates. Got down in the weeds, but while you're there helping clear the weeds, understandable for. So thank you very much, and I appreciate that. Next on the agenda item is the presentation for the fiscal year 2021 budget. Ron Meyer, Executive Director of Finance and Operations, and Kelly Benusa, Director of Business Services, will take the lead on the presentation. Ron, it's yours.
Okay. Good evening, Chair Ostaffy, Superintendent McIntyre, school board members and cabinet members. We come before you this evening to give board members a first look at the final proposed budget for fiscal year 2021. Tonight's work session, as well as the board meeting on June 23rd, which is where the board will be asked to approve the budget for 2021, is a culmination of our long-range financial planning process that has been implemented over the past year. The board will have spent parts of nine work sessions and board meetings, receiving information, giving guidance, and ultimately giving approvals for the 2021 budget, including our request on June 23rd to approve that final comprehensive budget. This evening, we will go through the important elements of the fiscal year 21 budget, and we will review the base and tactics forecast tool for the General Operations and Transportation Fund, the Food and Nutrition Service Fund, the Community Service Fund, and the capital budget. But before I turn it over to our team to take you through those items, I want to provide some context to what you will be reviewing this evening. The COVID-19 pandemic has impacted every part of our educational system, including our financial outlook. As you know, we rely heavily on funding from the state of Minnesota. And as we just heard from Valerie Doslin, the state has gone from a projected healthy surplus to a projected significant deficit. This will almost assuredly impact school districts across the state and has caused us to alter our fiscal year 2021 budget, as well as our financial projection model. As you know, we have traditionally been financially conservative in our budgeting and forecasting approach, particularly in the assumptions that we use as the baseline. To react to the potential economic impact related to the pandemic, we've altered the following assumption. First, we've decreased the projected number of student enrollment and the revenue associated with that enrollment by 75 students. In tracking our kindergarten registration for the fall, we have enrolled around 150 students, around 150 less students than the same time last year. And we believe that part of this has to do with the fact that the enrollment center has not been open for in-person registrations because of the pandemic. But we also believe that we may have families that choose other non-traditional options for their students as a response to COVID. So by decreasing the enrollment in our proposed budget, we hope to more closely reflect what our overall revenue will look like. The second change in our assumption is based on the revenue from the state. While some other school districts may typically assume a 1% to 2% increase in state funding in each of their projection year, projection model years, Oseo Area Schools have traditionally only assumed a 1% increase in the first year of each biennium of the model. This is helpful when we are faced with state economic challenges, like we currently are, as any change to our base assumption doesn't have as significant of an impact on our future projection model. So tonight, we have changed our model, which our team will go through in just a few minutes, to reflect a 0% increase in the funding formula for both years of the first biennium of that projection model, and then the typical 1% increase in the first year and 0% in the second year of the second biennium of the model. One element that we have not included in the budget assumption is resources that may be needed to implement whatever model is determined for our fall startup. Along with that, though, we have also not included expected revenue that we may receive, specifically as it relates to the federal COVID-19 aid that we are just starting to learn more about. Some of the aid that we can expect from the CARES Act funding is restricted. For instance, it's to be used for, some of it's to be used for decreasing our class sizes for summer school. Some of it's for increasing our technology access for our students. However, we also know that some of the aid will have less restrictions. And so we can use it for things like PPE, for workspace alterations, for additional staffing, and any other elements of our eventual plan that may require additional resources. At this time, based on our preliminary estimates, and again, this information is very new still to us, we believe that we will receive around $3.8 million in that federal aid for our COVID response. Now, some of those funds will be allocated to our non-public schools that are in our district. But we still anticipate that the remaining amount should be sufficient for any financial needs outside of the proposed budget that we're bringing to you tonight, and then ultimately on June 23rd. We will bring any of those budget changes as a result of our response to COVID and this new revenue from the CARES Act as part of our grant management process as those grants are ultimately approved at the state and the federal levels. While we are expecting and projecting the state to not give any funding formula increases in the next biennium, we know it is possible that they may use other financial tools to close potential budget deficits that may affect school districts, as Valerie talked about just a few minutes ago. In past years of economic challenges, the state has used state aid shifts and property tax recognition shifts to address their financial woes. While this strategy does not have an impact on our budget or on our long-range projection model, it does have an impact on our cash flow. Essentially, the school district will get the revenue that's due to us, but it will not come to us in the same timeline that it typically does. Rather, some of the aid payments could be delayed into the next fiscal year or the next few fiscal years. Rather, some of the aid payments could be delayed into the next fiscal year or the next few fiscal years. We will eventually get the revenue, but because it is delayed, it will impact our cash flow. So one of the exercises that we did while preparing our FY21 budget, and as we looked at the impact of COVID, was to perform a cash flow analysis based on multiple different scenarios that could take place. And even in the most dire scenario that we put together, which included a 60-40 state aid shift, as well as a $1.4 million local property tax delinquency rate, and that's about $1 million more than our typical delinquency rates, the district will have sufficient cash to meet our payroll and our other obligations without the need for short-term borrowing. This is a reflection of our healthy reserve balance, as well as creative and intentional investment policy. Again, while this does not specifically impact our budget, it's important to understand and consider when making budget decisions. The final item that I want to introduce and address before turning it over to our finance team is our Basin Tactics Financial Projection Model. We are now entering into our seventh year of referendum authority from the last referendum that was approved. And as you may recall, while we have maintained a healthy fund balance, we were projected to start deficit spending in the current fiscal year. Each year that we add to the model and get further out from the passage of the current referendum authority will actually increase our deficit spending. As you will see from the model that Kelly will introduce, our future deficit spending will require some significant budget cuts if we do not consider other interventions right now. Some potential solutions include a decrease in our tactical expenditure increase assumption. Currently, as you may recall from our Basin Tactics, our tactic for expenditure increases is at 3.25%. This is the target increase that we use as we develop our budget, our assumptions, and our negotiations framework. If we were to decrease that target, we could potentially minimize the amount of budget cuts that would be needed in future years. So tonight, we have included in the presentation a model that shows a decrease to 3% for fiscal years 2022 through 2025. An increase in revenue could also be considered as a way to mitigate those future budget cuts. As we have discussed in our Building a Better Future conversation, we will need to look at renewing our operating referendum in the fall of 2022 or at the very latest, the fall of 2023. Currently, we are below the cap or the maximum amount the state will allow us to levy for on an operating referendum. And if we were to increase our levy to the cap, to that voter approval, we could theoretically generate an additional $7 million of revenue each year. And then the third consideration is doing some combination of decreasing expenditures as a tactic, doing budget cuts, as well as new revenue from the operating referendum. So with that context, I'm going to turn it over to Kelly Benusa, our Director of Business Services. She will walk you through a summary of the general operating and transportation budget and will walk us through the financial forecast model for the general fund, as well as the capital budget. We also have Jeff Anthorge here, our Director of Nutrition Services, who will take us through the Food and Nutrition Service Financial Forecast. And then Brian Severson Hall, our Executive Director of Community Engagement, is prepared to take us through the Community Education Financial Forecast. And so with that, I will turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you, Ron. So tonight, before I start this, I just want to thank three key individuals in our Business Services Department for the fidelity that they put this budget together with us in these times. So I just specifically like to thank Cindy Brown and Mike Hewler. They're both our coordinators of Business Services, and then Michelle Arsene, who's our Business Services accountant. I'd also like to extend a thank you to all of our budget managers for all of the diligence they prepared their budgets for this fiscal year 2021 budget adoption and all the assistance they provided us during this entire process. So I am projecting up item two in our packets this evening. So can everyone see that document? You can just give me a thumbs up for a, yes, okay. All right, so I will be focusing on that document as we go through this presentation. So this is the first page of our memo. It's also in the informational section of our budget document. And on this first page, the timeline is embedded within the memo for the fiscal year 2021 budget planning. For the fiscal year 2021 budget planning process, there were more than six opportunities for the board to take action or provide direction to our budget managers for this fiscal year. As we went into the adoption cycle for the 2021 budget preparation, we have now reset the 2021 budget to pre-COVID trend data, with the exception of where it was noted, so prior to the April 28 budget adjustment. Some revenues that we already know are being impacted by COVID have been adjusted in this document, as Ron has previously noted. The enrollment decrease for kindergarten students estimated, decrease for interest revenue projections, and then our delinquent taxes are all areas of decrease for us from those original projections. Our other funds that you'll be hearing about tonight have also been built using the same methodology. But I thought that was important just to send that context before we started going into the details. Page of the memo, two grids, ones on the top and ones on the bottom that compare the budget in several different ways. The way that we compare the budget is at the top of that document compares the proposed 2021 budget with our prior year budget. And this information is also summarized in more detail in our executive summary at the front of our budget document. What this shows us is that our revenue is increasing by 1.99%, a little over $5 million, while our expenditures are growing by 3.19% or about $8.1 million. It shows a planned deficit spend down of about $3.9 million. This is less than what we had previously anticipated back in April. So included in the proposed fiscal year 2021 budget is the February 18th board-approved adjustments for a net increase in expenditures of $822,000. That amount is comprised of two basic areas, the first being the long-range financial planning budget adjustments of $478,000 and strategic investments of $343,000. So with those, with those adjustments included, the percentage increase in the expenditure budget is 3.19%. So even though we're growing our expenditure budget, it's still trending at 3.19% increase, so less than that 3.25%. So again, we're anticipating an operating deficit of $3.9 million for fiscal year 2021. And as Ron had already mentioned, we've applied the tactic to reduce the expenditure trend to 3.25%. And then for planning purposes out into the future, that trend of 3.75% that we've been using for a number of years is now being reduced down to 3.5% because we have better data trend that would support a reduction of that amount from 3.75% to 3.5%. So now I'll move on to the second way that we compare the budget. So we also look at the budget with the adoption for 2021 to the projected 2021 budget amounts. As we look at the revenues, they're coming in at $1.8 million less than what we had anticipated. However, our expenditures are coming in at $2.7 million less than we had anticipated. So this adopted budget is $877,000 better than what we had previously been projecting. So now if we start looking at the revenues, this document has been updated from what was sent out earlier and what's posted on the board book, and it will be shared and updated on board book. So there were just some number changes in the, in the top, but overall, the numbers didn't change. It was just the presentation of the document that was changing at this time. So the revenue is lower by $1.8 million, and I'm going to just walk through those areas. So typically, when we have a budget adoption, we have just a few items that are rising above that $100,000 threshold. This year, we have numerous items that are going back and forth, increasing and decreasing. So the largest decreased area is in the general education basic formula amount. And that variance is due to the 75 fewer students than what we had originally projected. We have a decreased amount estimated for our interest revenue of $1.2 million decrease. As we, as we analyze the special education revenue increase, it's actually coming in $1 million more than what we had previously anticipated based on the calculations and how 2019 and 2020 impact our current calculations in 2021. We have an abatement revenue increase of $762,000. Last year, fiscal year 2020, we had Safe Schools Aid one-time money, and that's being eliminated now in 2021. We have an operating referendum and local optional revenue increase levy adjustments of $686,000. We have that delinquent taxes decreasing due to COVID-19 impact of $500,000 that Ron has previously mentioned. Then we have a TRA pension revenue increase, and that's being offset by expenditure increases of about the same amount of $241,000. We have TIF levy adjustments decreasing $218,000. We have the desegregation transportation increase of $200,000. A judgment levy decrease of $136,000. And then we have TRA and PRA special funding increases, which have to do with our other post-employment benefits, and that's being offset by an expenditure increase by the same amount. So that's the changes that are happening in our revenues, so decreasing our revenues by $1.8 million from those projections back in April. So now to move on to the expenditures, they are lower by $2.7 million from that 3.25% increase. So starting with salaries, they're coming in $1.7 million based on contract settlements and FTE adjustments that are being taken in this budget adoption. We're adding one principal and special assignment for one year only. That cost is being offset by decreases in purchased services. We have the elimination of our project manager, which is being offset by increased purchase services as planned. And then we have attrition and allocation of staff of $4,000. So now moving on to the benefits. The benefits are decreasing $847,000. All of our items for PRA, workers' comp, and other benefits are coming in less than 3.25%, which is a $1.2 million savings. We've eliminated the OPEB levy for $600,000 decrease. And then in our medical insurance and our HSA plans, the rates are increasing by about 5%. And then we're also still planning on a migration of about 5% for our employees. And part of that is being offset by our OPEB trust paying for the remainder of the implicit subsidy that's calculated from our actuarial study. We have an unemployment increase due to COVID-19 impact of $365,000. That's going to follow us into fiscal year 2021. We have a TRA rate increase from 7.92% to 8.13%, which was the amount that was referenced in the revenue offset. And then we have a decrease in our life LTD insurance rates of $136,000. Then in purchased services, we have an increase of $195,000. In the purchased services area, we have the transportation contract increase of 5.6%. And we also were able to eliminate the prior MOU agreement with that contract, so an increase of $509,000. We're holding our purchased services in all areas at 0% where we can, so that's a decrease of $471,000. Our charge of action are being adjusted to reflect actual costs. We have an anticipated decrease in utilities of $213,000. And we anticipate our tuition increasing for special education students served by 287, and then a slight decrease for our PSEO student participation. So the net change is a $173,000 increase. And this purchased services line next is the offset to pay for the one principal on special assignment for one year only. So a decrease in purchased services here of $166,000. And then the next line mirrors the salary item for purchased services budget capacity increase, which was offset by the elimination of the project manager, as was planned. So I know that's a lot of information, but we have one category to go. So the other services decrease is anticipated at $382,000. We have some one-time Safe Schools Aid expenditures being eliminated for fiscal year 2021, so a decrease of $294,000. In this area, we also kept other services at 0% for a savings of $185,000. We're anticipating a fuel decrease of $127,000. And then we're anticipating a third-party billing increase of $125,000. And then the last item is offset by a revenue increase. This is the TRA/PRA special funding increase of $100,000. So I know that's a lot of revenue and expenditure adjustments that we've just walked through. And so what the next steps are in this budget process is that on June 23rd, the board will be asked to approve the budget for all funds fiscal year 2021. And then in July, we'll begin preparation of our 2020 audit. And then in November, which is our normal cycle, the school board will accept the 2020 audit results as presented by our audit firm, M&amp;K.R. So Ron, do you want me to ask for questions now, or do we want to go through the Basin Tactics for the general fund?
Let's go through the Basin Tactics because I think that that will give them some context on what does this mean in terms of our outlook.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, so in your packets tonight, we actually have three Basin Tactics for the general fund. So the first one grounds us back in what did the Basin tactic look like the last time it was presented in front of the board? The last time it was formally presented was back in February. We did the mid-year adjustment in April, but remember that adjustment was a net zero impact to the general fund. So we wouldn't have seen any change in the ending fund balance anticipated for the end of fiscal year 2020. So what I want to do before we get into the details, because all of these documents are set up in the same format, is I just want to, again, refresh everyone's understanding of how the document is set up. So this document contains nine years' worth of data. So we have five years' worth of prior year data. The current year on this document is revised 2020 fiscal year, and then four years' worth of projections. So the projections went from fiscal year 2021 through 2024. The top section, which is the colored section in all of these documents, in this fund, it's blue, is up on top, that's the base. And then the gray section on all of these documents is the tactics section where we can utilize revenue and expenditure tactics to impact the results. We have three arrows on these documents. The first arrow is in the left-hand corner, and that points to our fund balance target as a percent of expenditures. So that's the floor that we would anticipate for any of these funds to be not below that amount. The second one is in the bottom right-hand corner, and that's our revenue and expenditure assumptions for those projected years going forward. So this model back in February was 0 and 3.75%. Then the third arrow points to the year that we're doing our budget planning for. So back in February, we were doing our budget planning fiscal year 2021, and we were anticipating a spend down of $5.3 million. So that is the first document that we're showing. So that is the first document that we're showing. So now if I go to the second document, and the second document is now our June twenty-third basin tactic. So again, if we just walk through the document, that first arrow points to that five percent. Again, that's our floor, and that item did not change from the previous version. It's staying at five percent. Then the second item, if we look at that bottom right-hand corner, we've changed now the expenditure assumption from three point seven-five percent on the previous model to three point five percent. So that'll impact the top portion of the document. We've also, on the top of the document, if we go to the middle of the page, there's an adopted twenty-twenty-one column. That's the budget that we're looking to adopt for this next fiscal year. So now that is the current year that we're talking about. And we've also added the projection for twenty twenty-five. So now we're going out one more year into the future. What this document shows in the base, in the, in the base operational reductions is that we would need a combined expenditure reduction in twenty, starting in twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five of twenty-four million dollars. It still wouldn't say that we would need an operational reduction for next year because we'd still be holding at about twenty-two percent fund balance. Now moving down into the tactics, starting with revenue, that first line. Our revenue assumption for the basic formula increase, as Ron has mentioned previously, in the fiscal year twenty twenty-two projected column, we would have had a one percent increase in there in February model. However, now because we know, based on what Valerie told us with the state outlook, we've reduced that amount to zero percent. So that's less revenue coming into us for twenty-two and less revenue that would be with us in twenty-three and going forward. And so then picking back up in twenty twenty-four, that would be the first year of the next buy-in, and we see that one percent increase on the basic formula allowance being put into the model. The next line is the operating referendum timeline, and that's our ten-year operating referendum. In twenty twenty-one, we're now in the seventh year of that referendum. The projection would show that in twenty twenty-four, that's the last year of that ten-year operating referendum. What the model assumes is that it's back in place for twenty twenty-five. So an opportunity we have is at the bottom of that page, the operating referendum, which expires in fiscal year twenty twenty-four. The model assumes it's renewed and in place for twenty twenty-five, and we also would have the opportunity to have a conversation about potentially going to the cap. If we were to go to the cap, currently, the calculation would generate another seven million dollars in revenue. So that's a future conversation that we'll need to have. So now moving down to the expenditure tactics. The first item is the enrollment alignment adjust. And this amount has been updated for the two percent increase in the formula allowance for this fiscal year and also has been reduced for the reduction in estimated kindergarten students. The trend for reducing expenditures is still staying at three point two-five percent in this model, so that that's not a change from our previous model. And so then if we look at our operational reductions that would be needed in the tactic portion, it would be a combined amount of eighteen million with still no reduction in twenty twenty-two. So we've reduced in this model from the twenty-four million down to the eighteen million from the base to the tactic. So then if we look at the projected twenty twenty-two, that last arrow at the bottom in the middle of the page, it's pointing to the fund balance percent, and it's still at twenty-two point four-six percent and about seventy million. So with this here basin tactic, we have short-term improvements for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. However, we can see some long-term challenges ahead based on the additional year that we're putting into this model from twenty twenty-five. So with looking at those numbers, we have put together an alternative scenario with a few adjustments to that June twenty-third document that we just reviewed. And so what has changed in this document is the enrollment adjustment that was approved by the board in fiscal year twenty twenty-one of four hundred and seventy-eight thousand. So it's the first row under that tactics related to expenditures in the middle of the page. It shows a negative amount of four seventy-eight. And so if those students don't show up, that warranted that increase in enrollment. It's designed to not deploy those FTE. So if the students don't show up, which we've already accounted for in the model, then those expenditures wouldn't be deployed this next fiscal year at the start of the school year, which would save us four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. The next item is the next row down. And in that item, as Ron had alluded to, this scenario reduces that three point two-five percent trend down to three percent. And so that generates additional savings in the next four projected years from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five. Also, as we get closer to the year end for fiscal year twenty twenty, we are estimating additional savings of about a million dollars. So we haven't finished our fiscal year yet for twenty twenty, and we'll be working on that this summer in July and August. And then our auditors show up mid-August. And then in September, we usually can present those results to the board. So additional savings there, we're anticipating of a million dollars. And so what that does is it reduces those outlying operational reductions in twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five from eighteen million combined to fourteen million combined. So those are the three basin tactics that we're sharing this evening. We're just the general operating transportation fund. And then we've just gone through the details for the revenue and expenditure adjustments in the memo portion. So now, Ron, would you like to stand for questions?
I think it'd be good if it's okay with Chair O'Staphy that we pause for questions on the general fund portion, and then we can move into nutrition service and community ed.
Yeah, I think that'd be fine. Thank you, Ron. Let me ask the first question. In twenty twenty-four, what will, what is the expected revenue from the levy in the last year of the levy? Can you tell me that? I believe it's sixty, change, or higher, I believe.
The operating referendum?
Yes.
It's a, it's about thirty-five million.
Just thirty-five?
I'm off a few million. I could get that number for you, but, but it's closer to thirty-five than, than it is to sixty.
So that's a cliff that we can't fall off of in twenty twenty-five. So continuing to work conservatively from a financial standpoint to continue to earn the trust of the taxpayers, we will have to ask them about this in twenty twenty-four. So, or twenty twenty-two or earlier. So I just want to make sure people understand that that is a big chunk that would be taken away if we do not have our taxpayers and our voters re-up that authority for us in the future. So, thank you. Let's start with Jackie, Director Muscata Jones. Any questions?
I don't at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Director Douglas, any questions?
I do not have any questions at this time. I just wanted to say thank you to Kelly and the team for all the hard work you've done, Ron. I know that you guys are being thrown question after question by us regularly, and then to have our entire process and plans really change dramatically all, you know, in just a moment's notice. You've had to put a lot of work into this, and you've always acted in the best interest of our districts and our taxpayers. So I just wanted to say thank you for all your hard work and the changes that you had to make unexpectedly. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Director Dawson Walton, do you have any questions or comments? Can't hear you.
Sorry.
I'm going to hold up a sign.
I know. I'm so sorry, you guys. I don't necessarily have any questions. I, you know, I think it's a lot to absorb right now, just because of some of the changes. So I, you know, I'm really listening and probably will be following up with some questions later. But for right now, I'm thank you for this information.
Thank you, Director Dawson Walton. Director Simons?
Yeah, again echoing the thanks to Ron and Kelly and team. And I think we're really in a good position, especially relative to other districts, especially when we think about the potential impact from the state budget standpoint and the out-years of how that might affect us. I really appreciate everybody who's been a part of this process, past and present, to ensure that we're in this position right now. And, you know, as I hear about all of the changes, I guess my perspective is I'm going to assume they continue to be fluid with everything that's happening and not, not having great certainty as to what it might look like in the fall. Even though our current enrollment numbers are down, I suspect that as families consider their options for the fall, I think our district offers a lot of advantages in distance learning that other smaller options may not offer. So maybe we'll see that number come back as we get closer. And I'm also happy that we were able to have our contracts approved prior to this point in time and that we're able to have those executed and have, I think, really well-compensated staff and leadership. So that's not a particular issue at this point in time. But we do want to be cognizant of what that means. And Ron and Kelly, as you pointed out, our expenses of over three percent always exceed what the legislature provides. So that's something that we always need to continue to be aware of. And I know we've got really strong continuous improvement plans and zero-based budgeting. So I have continued to have support for those processes as we think about the, the short term and the long term. So again, thank you for all of the work, and I'm, I know this will be fluid, and I know it's going to continue to be a lot of work.
Thank you, Director Simons. And from my perspective, we've continued to take a look at what our surplus, or not a surplus, what our reserve is, and that's about three and a half months. About three in ten Americans don't have more than a month of cash available. Seven in ten don't have more than three months. Well, this isn't necessarily cash, but we only have about three and a half months in reserve. So as we come to the twenty twenty-four cliff and as we have to deal with huge amounts of financial uncertainty coming into this fall and maybe into the future based upon the state budget, we have to keep that in mind. We have a big number, but it's not a lot for continuing our services into the future. So again, Kelly, thank you very much for all of the work and the team, and you'll be making changes, I'm sure, throughout the next couple of weeks and probably as things happen into the fall. So thank you very much.
Chair O'Staphy, it's Superintendent McIntyre. It's hard to raise my hand virtually. I, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. As we watch things unfold this spring, I just really want to commend our team. It felt like it was something new every day that could impact our budget planning. And Ron was always saying, we'll go back and we'll rework it. We'll go back and we'll rework it. And the ability of the team to be adaptable and just continue to rework the numbers and keep reworking the plan. I appreciate Director Simon said we're in a better position than most, and yet you still see the impact here of the way we forecast. And kind of brings me back to what Chair O'Staphy said. There's so much uncertainty, we just don't know moving forward. But hopefully you see in the model the level of detail almost more than any of us can really digest. But it's there, and it's a model that's really helped us through some tough months recently and probably some tough months ahead. And then as the board, you know, you've received that recommendation for thinking about the potential referendum in twenty-two with, you would have another opportunity in twenty-three if, if needed before that hit in twenty-four. So as hard as it is to see that forecast out, out, I believe it's still, you know, healthy for us to be thinking ahead like this, not knowing what the next year is going to bring and beyond. So I just want to say thank you to Ron and Kelly and Mike and the whole team. There's still more unknowns coming our way probably, but we fall back on our process and our model, and that has helped us. So appreciative and grateful for that.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent McIntyre. Ron, back to you to move on to the next budget.
Sounds great. So next up is going to be our food and nutrition service fund, and I'm going to welcome Jeff Ansorge, our Director of Nutrition Service, to the virtual table.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Board. Chair O'Staphy, how are you? So the food nutrition service fund, as Kelly had explained, it's the same format as the transportation and general fund. And looking at twenty twenty, we had to make some last-minute revisions which were, which were approved and brought to you. At the bottom of, at the bottom of the page, you see that our fund balance minimum is twelve percent threshold. At the end of two thousand and nineteen, our actual percentage was forty-one point seven-one. Our revised budget for twenty twenty due to the COVID pandemic and loss of revenue, we were looking at projected one point six million dollar loss in fund balance almost, which would leave us at about a thirty point one-four percent fund balance. So still in a fairly good position. Looking at twenty twenty-one, the budget that we're looking to adopt, at the top, our revenues, we're projecting twelve million, six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And total expenditures, capital expenditures and other expenditures, projections are twelve million, six hundred and eighty-two thousand. So without tactics, that would put us at reducing our fund balance by thirty-four thousand dollars in twenty twenty-one. And with tactics, those tactics primarily related to revenue would be an increase in federal and state reimbursements of a two percent, which we've seen year over year on average. Would give an additional one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars in revenue, which would put our change in fund balance for twenty twenty-one to a positive seventy-nine thousand roughly. So the projections for the fund balance for twenty twenty-one, the percentage would be a twenty-eight percent, and our threshold's a twelve percent. And that would put us at a three million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar fund balance. And Chair O'Staphy had mentioned the three-month reserve. And I'd mentioned this in the past, MDE has a maximum of three months expenditures for the food service fund, which would equal about three million, eight hundred. So we're, we're pretty close to that, slightly under. Looking out from twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-five, the revenues, there's no increased projection in this model. The expenditures, there's that three point five percent increase assumption built in. And if we didn't have an increase in revenue, if we didn't apply any tactics and our expenditures continued to rise at three point five percent, we would still be above our twelve percent threshold until twenty twenty-five. So there would be that twenty twenty-four cliff, but I don't feel that we'll be at that. I feel that tactics with increasing revenue over the next few years, as well as honing our expenditure, expenditures on what we can control, will keep us away from that twenty twenty-five reduction amount that you see there of nine hundred thousand dollars. I think that's all I have for the food service fund. Any, any questions?
So one, one quick comment that I will just make before opening up to, to questions is keep in mind with this in particular, this is assuming that we are going back to business as normal as it relates to meals. And so as we know from the past few months, as we had to shift very quickly to a cold lunch and sending it out, we weren't, we weren't offering or giving as many meals as we typically would. So certainly depending on what happens in September. So certainly depending on what happens in September and depending on how long that goes, can impact our FY '21 budget as well as this projection. So we will continue to monitor, both from a revenue and an expenditure perspective and need to pivot and to make adjustments to staffing levels, to food ordering and things like that as we move forward. Again, we will be bringing those, any changes that we, and alterations that we need to make to our mid-year budget. And so the Board will stay abreast of what's happening in terms of some of those changes. So I just wanted to make that caveat before we open it up to questions.
Thank you Ron. Let's see, let's start this time with Director Dawson Walton, any questions for you Kelsey? Can't hear you.
I know, I'm coming on, I have a two-step process here, okay? So with, okay, so given the situation we're in, it's kind of a theme here, right, of the unknowns. What would you say in terms of, just, you know, I don't know the loss of revenue, but like, how, I mean, how has it just, besides the numbers, just like, how has it like impacted just like your team? Just how you're delivering the meals, just kind of, I don't know, I'm just kind of curious from your perspective. I might, there was so much always focus on the food piece of, as we went into distance learning, a lot of just, you know, questions in the community around, you know, if we, you know, what if we don't need school? We don't need the lunches, but then, you know, this is helping us with revenue in the district. You know, there's a lot of conversation and so, I just was just curious of your perspective and your thoughts of around during this time, the last couple of months of change.
Yeah, I feel like we saw tremendous support from the community with those questions that you had mentioned. I've got, got many emails and my staff had a lot of questions from community members, families coming and asking about food and saying that, hey, we don't really need the food, but we want to keep providing revenue for you. And so the response to them was, we're here for you, so if you need the food, it's available. And the team, you know, the frontline team, we've got a great group of people that work for us, they've been with us for 20 to 30 years. They rose to the challenge, they were more than happy, they were excited to be able to serve our community. And that was very evident. Yeah, so it's, it's a pleasure to have inherited such a good team and been a part of this for the last couple of years.
Yeah, it just seemed to be, you know, so many people wanted to know how they can contribute. And I just thought it was just such a strong connection with, you know, going to get, I saw so many social media posts. I mean, our family did too, and then there was a lot of food in those when you'd go there. I mean, I was like, oh, you know, I'm really surprised about just, you know, how many resources were there. So I, I just thank you for, I mean, I am always so impressed by your, your team and kind of your vision for how to generate revenue, how to expand the program to reach our, all of our communities and our schools. And so, thank you.
Yeah, I've got a great team and the, and the community really stepped up with donations as well. We had churches that contacted us, we worked with Second Harvest, we were able to supply weekend meals to families too. So, great team, great community, yep.
Thank you Director Dawson Walton, Director Simons, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions, you know, I reflect back on the last decision process that we had on the budget on this area in particular. And I'm confident that we made the right decisions at that time. And again, considering the unknowns going into the fall, we may have some different, more difficult decisions to make. But again, thank you to your team for navigating this. And I'm glad we're able to make the right decisions at the right time and thank you for serving our community in this way.
Thank you. Thank you Director Simons, Director Muscata Jones.
Just, thank you again, and thank you Ron for your work on this and Kelly, your work for this on the budget as well and all that. And I just want to say to Mr. Ansorge, I appreciate what you've been doing and having my daughter in there for the short time, working on some special projects. I have a little more appreciation for how much you care about our students and their nutritional needs. And by nutritional needs, I mean including religious practices and allergies, et cetera. So I'm glad that this budget is in a decent place for you so that you can continue that work, thanks.
Yep, thank you, yeah, Bella's great, she's, she's a pleasure to work with, so.
Thank you Director Muscata Jones. Director Douglas.
No, I don't have any questions or comments at this time, thank you.
Thank you Director Douglas, and Jeff, I had a question, not necessarily related to the budget, but while we have you, can you give us a little bit of what's going on currently with food services for the summer? For any of our special programs as well as general programs, I know there's some changes coming. So could you give us a little update?
Yep, so generally speaking, we would be starting summer programming mid-June. MDE, USDA have provided waivers through the summer, which have allowed us to continue serving at our 13 sites that we offer curbside pickup. So from June 8th through June 30th, we're gonna continue at the 12 of the 13 sites that we were serving at. Palmer Lake, we reduced, we took that service out just due to sheer numbers and we added another. So from June 8th to June 30th, we have Monday through Friday, 10:30 to 1:30, where we offer the bundled, bundled meals, the breakfast and lunch still. And we are also offering the transportation meals as we have in the past. Since we don't have transportation, the contract has come up and those costs would be much greater to us at this point. It would affect the food service budget negatively if we had a daily delivery. We switched that model to a weekly delivery where we're sending them basically a week's worth of meals to keep the transportation costs down. So that'll serve the community at those 13 sites from the 8th to the 30th. And then we have English learner program at two sites that starts June 11th and goes through July 16th. So we'll continue curbside, plus we'll support the roughly 100 students in each of those programs. We've got five Kid Stop sites that we're supporting with breakfast and snack as well. And the Kid Stop will be starting this week Thursday and going through August 13th, I believe it is. And then in July, we have Freedom Schools. So Freedom Schools start on July 16th and I believe they run through August 13th as well. And that's three sites, those three sites will support the roughly 100 students there as well. But as far as what, what's available to the community as of July 1st, those five sites that have programming at them will still continue curbside at those five sites through the duration of those programs.
Those are the five Kid Stop sites that you mentioned, correct?
The two EL sites and the three Freedom School sites.
Oh, okay, those five, thank you. And I'm sure we'll have this information out on the district website, correct?
Yep, it's there, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, thanks Ron, if you want to move on to the next.
All right, thank you, and our last base and tactics is Community Service Fund, so welcome Brian Suberson Hall.
All right, thank you, good evening, school board members and cabinet members, good to see everybody. I know Tanya called the Fund One fluid, I think it would be no understatement to say that Community Services Fund is fluid in all capital letters right now. So I guess that's how I would start it. And I actually want to say thanks to Jeff for mentioning the end date for those summer programs. I think you all are aware that we were ending summer programs a couple of weeks earlier than normal because we aren't, we still don't have our plan fully realized for what fall 2020 reopening is. So that's gonna give us a couple of weeks to have to do physical adjustments if needed and other adjustments. Just to, I wanted to piggyback on what Jeff said. Well, you know, I already said capital letters fluid. You know, to be honest, I think we shared at the last, at our, our board session way back in April or May when the school board graciously executed a fund transfer from Fund One to Fund Four. The field of community ed in Minnesota, which includes OCEO, is decimated right now. That's the easiest way to say it. You know, on March 15th, we immediately stopped receiving 65% of our revenue. And, and that's the case as of now, right? So this has been a dramatic situation for us. And, you know, the, the budget that we're bringing forward today is, as Kelly has already mentioned, is based on prior year trends. Well, you know, we, we are unlikely to bring in $20 million this next year. But the way, the way our budget process is set up, it's based on previous year trends. That being said, and I'll talk about it a little more in a little bit, we'll obviously be adjusting as we go along and as we already have. So as you look at your document, our revised 2020 document, you can see on here that we're looking to go from a fund balance of $3 million to $2 million, right? So almost a million dollar loss in the fund balance. And probably the most important thing that we've added on this page is on the very bottom center of the paper and, or the document. And what became abundantly clear in this last three months is the importance of us to divide out what we'll call, we call restricted for community education programs and then restricted for early childhood, family ed, restricted for school readiness and restricted for adult basic education. Typically, when I've presented to the board, I've talked about the range of the fund balance that I want to be in. But what this last year has highlighted to us is the importance of separating out what I typically call unrestricted community ed programs, which is things like Kid Stop, facilities, et cetera, from ECFE, school readiness and ABE. And the important distinction there is, let's say that ABE's expenditures outpace their revenue. We can move dollars from the unrestricted community ed general fund balance into that restricted fund to cover the costs, but you cannot move the money the opposite way, right? So for instance, if Kid Stop's revenue was outpaced by his expenditures, you can't take any of that million dollars in ECFE fund balance and shift it over to Kid Stop. So we've added that to this document to highlight that. And as you can see, when we finished 2019, we had $3 million in fund balance. $425,000 of it, $426,000 of it was unrestricted and the remaining was in restricted. Well, based on our actions this year, we are gonna end this year with $0 in unrestricted fund balance. So what is obviously gonna be crucial for this year is everything that we do, we have to make sure before we run things, that those program areas' revenue is gonna outpace its expenditures. Because at our previous board meeting, the board reiterated its desire for Fund Four to be a self-sustaining fund, which is my plan, right? So without going too deep in the weeds, for instance, this summer, we evaluated all the programs we typically run in the summer. And if there was a program in the last couple of years whose expenditures outpaced its revenue for summer programming, we didn't run it this summer. So we didn't run Camp Rock's Academic Adventures, for example, right? And what does that, what does that mean? It means we're not gonna lose money on the financial side, but it also meant 900 youth didn't have a typical summer out-of-school time experience and 115 people didn't have the job assignment that they were hoping for this summer, right? So I'm already making, these adjustments are already being made currently. And we also adjusted our staffing model based on our enrollment for programs that we are running. So we are running summer care sites typically at our, and I, I wanna, I don't want to belabor the fact, you're gonna hear me call them summer care sites and sometimes call them Kid Stop. The Kid Stop team is calling them summer care sites because these, this program looks vastly different than what a normal summer program looks like, right? So they're kind of proud of the Kid Stop brand, so they've been referring it to it mainly as summer care sites. But with our summer care sites, we typically have 1,300 students signed up for Kid Stop in the summer. This summer, we have 450, right? So we're still only at one-third of our typical participation. But we are staffing accordingly. And our plan is that our revenue should outpace our expenditures by $50,000 to $100,000, which isn't a very wide margin from what we're used to in the summer. We also are running our enrichment mini-camps, again, following guidelines, which typically we have classes that are 20 to 25 students, but we're running mini-camps at nine student maximum to meet the 10 maximum in a space guidelines. And we've negotiated, I guess, what instructor pay. We've, we've worked with some of our people that provide instruction normally in the summer and said, hey, look, here's what we normally pay you, here's what we can pay you this summer based on only having half the number of participants. So, and actually this last week and a half, we've been very encouraged by some people signing up for our mini-camps. We're starting to fill the majority of them and we've offered a couple online and we're offering some, we're offering the rest of them face-to-face at Cedar Island. So that's been a, I don't know, a mini ray of hope, I guess, for summer programming. So I'm currently making adjustments, will continue to make adjustments. And Ron and Kelly, and then you guys know Mike Heuler works with me directly in community services from the business service team. I think we need to kind of still figure out how we want to give the Board updates on adjustments that we're making in community services. But that's why I wanted to give you a little example of how I'm adjusting for summer programs already, even though that's still within our current fiscal year, right? To give you an idea of how I'm thinking about how we'll move forward in the future. Because I don't have a crystal ball and depending on how we reopen the fall and how many people move from unemployment to employment will impact our participation numbers. That's kind of a lot, but I wanted to, I wanted to at least share with you how I'm thinking about this particular department adjustments that I've already made. I want to acknowledge the hard work of all the Kid Stop staff and other ESPs in the system who chipped in and had emergency childcare for essential workers up and running mid-March all the way through Friday. And our summer care staff all reported back to work yesterday, right? So we had a whole slate of staff who are, are back on the sites getting set up and ready to welcome students on Thursday. And I think I will pause.
Thanks Brian, I appreciate that update, it's been very difficult. So with that, let me start with any questions, Director Douglas.
Well, you know, this has really been a lot of information and I just wanted to say, Brian, thank you for really explaining your thought process and why you made the choices that you've made and letting us know how you're thinking about our summer programming and how it impacts our fiscal year now and our future. This has really been an incredible, incredible and not a great way. Transition, our, our programming for summer has normally been off the charts and really well attended. And so this is just unprecedented and unexpected. And so I just wanted to say thank you for your really thorough explanation of how you came to. of, um, how you came to, uh, where we are today. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Douglas. Uh, Director Simons, do you have a question or comment?
Um, a, a couple of comments. So, um, thank you, Brian, for that detail unrestricted and unrestricted. That's really helpful to understand as we make decisions. Um, and I, I, I really hear, um, in your presentation, um, the challenges that we're encountering and what we wish we could be doing, um, and kind of where we're at today. And, um, I had a question and it's not related to budget. And if, if you don't have the information, um, that's fine and we can learn about it later. Um, it seems like there may, it sounds like you're saying maybe there's an uptick in the desire for enrollment into our summer programs. And I know, um, I know my kids need that opportunity right now and need, uh, need that in their life to be connecting with other kids and to be participating directly and in person in, um, classes and events. So are you sensing a desire from our, um, parents in our community to want to offer more yet? And do we have the flexibility to pivot and change and offer a little more as people maybe want more? Or, um, or maybe as things open up faster than we might expect?
Yeah, great question. Um, so I, I think we're just seeing the little uptick in some of the enrichment mini camps because those are for shorter amount of times. Um, one of the, you know, one of the things that will, that is challenging, especially this summer, even if, let's say, um, gosh, let's say next week, after people who are in the restaurant and theater and bowling alley business start to get their employment change again, they start calling us for childcare, you know? Well, it's tough to, it's tough to add kids right now because you essentially don't, you essentially want to add kids when you have a cohort of nine of them, since kids all have to be nine in one space with one staff. So some of the things that we're encountering this summer, I believe, are three things why we're only at a third of typical enrollment. Um, number one, people in our community are still unemployed and they don't need childcare. They can't afford to even do some extra enrichment opportunities. That's no, absolutely number one, in my opinion. I think, um, number two, there are a number of people who are still employed but are working remotely from home and think, why spend money on enrichment and other things if I'm at home with my kids, right? So I think that's the second one. And then definitely the third one is because we're following MDH and MDE and CDC guidelines, the programming looks very different, right? So when families, when we first announced, you know, we're going to be open, but here's what it looks like. We got feedback from a lot of families, right? I don't want to send my kid, some families didn't want to send their kid if there's no field trip opportunities. Although I think I start looking at that now, like we might be able to send nine kids to the bowling alley together. But then some families might not be comfortable with that. And, and some are thinking, man, I don't really want my kid, that's not a normal Kid Stop experience. I don't know that I want my kid to be in the same classroom all day, uh, with only one group of cohort, right? So I think a lot of things have happened and there certainly were other families who are like, thank God you're open, you know? We're trying to, we still work, we still report to work, uh, at our work site and our, you know, we need childcare. You know, so we've experienced kind of the whole, uh, range on that, Tanya. I don't know if that answers your question fully, but that would be my, uh, the feedback that we've been getting from our community members.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Brian. I think you're really a key indicator as we continue to monitor, um, kind of our, uh, community's, um, feedback on expectations for returning to school. I think, I think you really are a key indicator for that. And, um, thank you for the decisions, the tough decisions you've had to make. And I just want to, um, give you my expressed, uh, support and, and the trust in your decision-making that you're doing. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Simons. Uh, Director Dawson Walton?
Um, yeah, I would echo what, um, you know, Tanya just said. I, I really, I think your staff has had to be so flexible, um, and, you know, really, um, you know, they're really kind of in the eye of the storm around COVID and, and, um, and so I'm just so appreciative of, of them. They're essential to, um, to like the livelihood of a lot of our families, um, that are able to kind of, you know, who are also essential workers, um, to go out, um, and, and, um, be on the front line. And so I, I'm just, um, I, I, you know, even as a parent, it's kind of one of those things where I'm like, oh, man, like, you know, just having, um, not having things open and understanding why, um, and then, you know, realizing as you think about summer, it's like holy buckets when you're working full-time and there's not a lot opening or things are opening so slow. It's, it's hard. I mean, I think we're all, um, feeling it. Um, and I am thankful for the things that are open, you know, some of the mini camps on the Freedom School. Um, and I, um, you know, I think we'll be watching it really closely. Um, I know, you know, you're really committed to equity in our district. And, um, I just, I just, I'm just very thankful for you and your team and your staff and, um, and thank you.
Thank you, Director Dawson Walton. Director Muscata Jones?
Brian, thanks for the update on, um, the budget and, um, the clear understanding of what all that involves, including the impact to our employees. Um, I just personally, I got involved in community ed in Oseo in nineteen ninety-five. And so I've seen community ed grow, um, to the program it was before COVID hits. And it's, it's hard to see, it's hard to see this right now. And it's hard to see my, um, colleagues who are also, um, employed through community ed, um, losing jobs. So I, 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 um, support your really tough decisions. I'm sorry that you have to make them and, um, I'm hoping that we can figure out a way out of this.
Thanks, Jack.
Thank you, Director Muscata Jones. Uh, yeah, Brian, I think, you know, there's two main things that they're going to drive our, our ability to provide Kid Stop in the fall, employ everyone we need and, and serve the community. And that's going to be, will all the kids be at school in a normal manner? And we're going to talk about that later in, in tonight's presentation and what our planning is for. And I don't know that that is a part of the plan at this point, based upon what's all been going on in current directives. Uh, number two, uh, I think it assumes that all parents are back at work, either back at work with jobs or back in the office. And, and I know for a fact, there are many large corporations around the metro that are not going to have their, e- even if the emergency order goes away, they are not coming back in the fall. It will be phased, it may happen early next year, but we're still going to have a lot of parents at home. Uh, maybe eliminating the need for before or after school care. So I, I think planning for not the best case, but certain, you know, certainly reductions is continually the way to go and, and that's unfortunate.
Chair Ostafi, can I jump in one more time here?
Sure.
I just want to say thank you to Brian and, and actually, um, Brian has helped facilitate not only with his team, but really worked in partnership with our human resources department, our, our union leadership and our, clearly our finance team. So all those, those variables have really needed to move very rapidly and, and quickly adapt to things as Brian so well, so he explained so well. And if and how the virus changes, he's proven, we've proven that we can adapt either direction. So I really want to commend the team and working actually very closely with the employees as well. Uh, recently especially, communicating very well and providing information to, to our workers when things change pretty fast. So, um, that, that happened as part of a really strong partnership across multiple departments. And Brian was at the front of that with some of our other leaders. So, um, nice job, Brian.
Yeah, thank you for that. Uh, you know, we have three main levers that will drive participation and none of them are in our hands at this point. Uh, but we, how we react to them and how we do that and, uh, that is. And, uh, I appreciate the insight you've given us is, is what we're looking at. So thank you very much.
Chair Ostafi?
Yes, Director Simons.
Uh, I just wanted to kind of, um, jump on what Superintendent McIntyre said. Um, you know, thank you, Brian, but also thank you to the staff that's had to be really flexible in this time. So we really do appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Ron, if you want to proceed, thank you.
Yep, uh, so that's, um, that's all that we have for this evening. Again, as Kelly mentioned, our next step is to come back. We'll continue to monitor and make, uh, potentially some minor adjustments um, and bring back to you on the twenty-third in two weeks for, um, for approval and adoption. Again, just, uh, to remind you, we are required to have an adopted budget by the end of June. So, um, that is why it's scheduled for the twenty-third. Um, and again, before I turn it back over to Chair Ostafi, I just want to, um, say a- as well as Superintendent McIntyre, who alluded to it earlier, just thank you to Kelly and to her team, to Mike, to Cindy, to Michelle, and really the entire business service team that takes a whole entire team to bring, um, such a, an important and significant, um, document and all the preparation that goes behind the scenes to it. So I just want to thank her for her leadership with that team. And I'll turn it back to Chair Ostafi.
Ron, we, we
Yes.
do unfortunately, fortunately have one more fund to go through.
Oh, did we?
The basin tactic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We haven't done the capital one. I know it's been a lot of information this evening.
We do. I apologize. We do have one more.
That's, that's okay. COVID nineteen has, um, impacted all of these numbers greatly. So, um, I'm just going to take a few minutes and go through the capital basin tactic. So, um, with the capital basin tactic, Cindy Brown, um, and myself, uh, prepared this document. And so, um, I'm just going to walk through the highlights of this fund. This fund, the capital, operating capital and the capital tech levy, um, has a ten percent minimum fund balance threshold. And so that's what we manage this fund to. Um, it has a zero percent revenue and expenditure, um, assumption for, uh, the projected twenty-two through twenty-five, uh, fiscal years. Um, in the middle of the page, we have now updated this document to reflect the adopted twenty-twenty-one budget proposal. Um, and that is a spend down of fund balance at the bottom of that column in red of one point four million dollars. That fund balance is anticipated to still be at thirty-one percent at the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-one. Um, we've also added fiscal year twenty-twenty-five to this document. When the, um, operating referendum was approved for ten years, at that same time, the capital tech levy, as we call it, was also approved for a ten-year timeframe. So that dollar amount expires in, at the end of fiscal year twenty-twenty-four. And this model assumes it's back in place for fiscal year twenty-twenty-five. So again, um, the board will have to engage in conversations about the renewal of the tech levy also in the future. This document also shows, um, that we will have to slow down our expenditure growth starting in twenty-twenty-two to be able to softly land at that ten percent number at the end of twenty-twenty-five. And the fund balance at the end of twenty-twenty-two with a three hundred dollar reduction in expenditures from this adopted budget would, would bring in about a twenty-four percent fund balance or about a three point seven million dollar fund balance in this fund. So that's all I have to share on this fund. And then just to summarize all of the funds that we talked about this evening, the June budget adoption for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one is just one opportunity to discuss this budget. In September, October, we're going to bring in the year-end results for fiscal year twenty-twenty, the year that we're just closing here in June. And then in February, we'll bring forward a mid-year adjustment for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one for this budget that we're adopting now. So all of those other items, as they actually become known to us, will include those in that February mid-year budget adjustment. So this is just a point in time in our budget process. And about every three, four months, we have an update to this financial projection. So this is what the financial projection would look like this evening. So, um, with that, that closes this section of the presentation. Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Kelly. And Ron, I think you were wrapping up with that. Uh, it's currently eight oh seven by my clock. Uh, we've been here over two hours. I think we all need a bit of a break. Uh, let's take, uh, five minutes. Uh, we're going to recess and come back at eight twelve. So eight twelve and, uh, Randy and Sherry, if you could put that up on the screen, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. We'll come back in one minute, one minute. Okay, let's get started, everybody. Welcome back. Uh, next on the agenda, item number six is, uh, Community Engagement Plan, Brian. We'll have some more positive things to talk about in this portion of the presentation. And I know we're all very interested. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back. Next on the agenda is item number six, Presentation of our Community Engagement Plan by Brian Severson Hall, something that the board has shown a tremendous interest in and hopefully much more positive topic. So Brian, please proceed.
All right. Thank you, Chair Stoffey. Yeah, I'm excited to get to have this on our agenda for the work session tonight. And I'll look forward to hearing some of your reactions to how we kind of want to reset some of our efforts around family and community engagement. And so I'll just kind of walk through the presentation. And then if you have questions as I go along, feel free to stop and ask them. Or also, obviously, at the end, I have time for some initial reactions as well. And Michael Lehan, so thanks to Michael Lehan for joining us tonight. You know, as you know, Mike's the principal at Osseo Senior High right now, but is about to switch roles on July 1st. And one of the things you'll see as for, so here's some foreshadowing. One of the things you'll see in this plan is Michael and I have agreed to do some co-leading of this work and kind of take the capacity of both of our areas of responsibility and combine our forces to do that. So we'll get into that a little more as we go along in this topic. So and Anthony, just chime in and make sure I have the presentation up. All right, right, bud?
Can do.
All right, we good to go?
We're good to go.
All right, thanks. So yeah, tonight we want to talk about family and community engagement here at our school board work session. And the outcome of this presentation is that all of the board members will receive an update on some previous engagement work briefly and understand the process being put in place to create a multi-year engagement plan. One of the questions that came up from some board members previously and also even from Corey, because as you know, my, my job title is Executive Director, Director of Community Engagement. Well, that wasn't always the job title or the department title. So in the eighties, community ed founded. And that's when you started seeing Fund Four programs. And in the 2000s, my predecessor, Mike Looby, the community ed department and director title and responsibilities changed. That's when it changed to Community Engagement Department. And really, the backstory on that was that position was going to be on the cabinets. We added Fund One areas where previously, community ed oversaw Fund Four program areas. So things like the Enrollment Center, Targeted Services, programs like that. And it also added community partnerships. So one of the things when I onboarded here in Osseo Area Schools, well, 10 years ago, on July 1st will be 10 years. I would often get assigned things by the superintendent, like the opening of the Northwest Family Service Center, partnering with the city of Maple Grove and OMGBA to, to open the Maple Grove Community Gymnasium, partnerships with Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth. So really, this, the engagement side of this particular department was really around assisting the superintendent as potential community partnerships came up and assisting with those. Zane Wood Rec Center, for example. So I helped, and now Ron is, and I are combining on some of these things too, on joint powers agreements, so those kind of things. And then I would say about halfway through my tenure is when we started adding a little what I would call more of an engagement focus, right? And continued conversations about where we want to be. And this is really where we started hearing more of our staff and more of our school boards and more of our families really talking about what is engagement. And it was around this time where we added engagement as a priority results work. And that's where you see things like on our annual school scorecard, you see things around, do students feel welcomed? Do they have a trusted adult? We started adding some of those engagement components and embedding those into our work. And some of my partnership work even took on a more of an engagement focus. A number of you on the board have attended, for instance, our Community Forum on Race that we hold every year. So I think you started seeing things that look more like what I would call engagement efforts versus straight up community partnerships. So I just thought I'd give a little history. Corey seemed to be, find that interesting, but that's just something that has evolved. In 2018, this last year, we recommended adding an engagement section to the continuous improvement plans of sites and departments district wide. So we've just completed our first year of having that. And our thinking behind that is school sites have always been, in my opinion, and will continue to be the primary hub for family engagement. So we really wanted to embed engagement work into the work of sites and departments. Although this is not a complete summary, it's a, I wanted to give you kind of the main areas that everyone put on their engagement plan. And that's one of the things too that happen, always happens. But you can see all these plans. If you go to school sites, they actually have their site improvement plans on their website. So you could, you could go into more detail if you wanted to. But these, what, seven areas seem to be the main focus of our sites. PTO participation, curriculum nights, including math, science, and literacy focus, some EL and culturally specific parent nights in circles, some parent series, some real talk parent nights, student-led events, kind of our traditional general family events on sites, whether that's a school carnival or other types of activities like that. And then if you remember from a year ago, our sites utilized our Epstein and Yasso models on family engagement and cultural wealth model. So I think it was exciting to see our sites enact that into their continuous improvement plan as well as our departments enacting that into our improvement plans. And I also wanted to take a minute to acknowledge this school board. So I think this board has shown great interest in expanding community engagement efforts. I think a couple of things that we want to, that I thought were noteworthy from my perspective as someone who thinks about this type of work is the fact that you added listening sessions. Remember back when we used to meet face to face? You added listening sessions for people to attend. And also, I think even this last school board meeting where we, where you added the ability for people to still make public comment during school board meetings, even when we're meeting virtual, shows some steps that you're willing to make that I think are important and impressive. And one of the things that I want to do, and you'll see that in this plan, is to interview board members to create some consensus on outcomes desired for this work. I know we've talked quite a bit about family and community engagement or a desire to have that. In my, my opinion, I don't yet have a clear understanding of the exact outcomes that board members are interested in. So I want to revisit individual interviews. Back in March, I, I started setting up one-on-one interviews with board members to talk about your goals for family engagement. And I only had two of them set up. And I don't know if Jackie and Tanya remember that, but we actually had to cancel our, our board interviews because this is when COVID hit, right? So back in March, my plan was to start creating a engagement plan by interviewing each of the board members individually to talk through what family and community engagement means to you. So I would think that's a good starting for us, starting point for us again. So what you're going to see right now is what I hope will be to you an accelerated planning phase so that we can move, that has some action steps in it, but that's so that we can move toward more action-oriented family and community engagement as we move forward this next school year. So I already mentioned I'd like to, in June, conduct board interviews to determine potential outcomes, action steps, and investment level potentially too. Want to do some analysis time in June of 2020. Continue our review of the site and department improvement plans. We've got a bunch of parent, staff, and student survey data that we typically collect. Brooklyn Bridge Alliance, in my opinion, is one of the better organizations in our community on engaging youth and youth voice. So partner with them on ways that they execute their youth-to-youth surveys. Hold, they're going to hold a summit, and they have an Amplify Youth Voice campaign that's coming up. And I think Mr. Lehan does some amazing youth voice stuff at Osseo, or youth voice initiatives at Osseo Senior High as well. And then also, review the efforts and data collected during distance learning and implement those strategies into the multi-year plan. I think this is going to be critical because doing engagement through distance learning feels different to me than face-to-face engagement. And I think it's going to be important for us to review what we learned from families and students and what their experiences were during these last three months, especially if we end up in some type of hybrid model next year where students spend some time face-to-face and sometimes remotely. So I, I'm really kind of, while I don't have an answer for that, I feel like it's something we should examine and be ready to put into our plan. And then through the course of interviews, if there are other, other items that I've missed that we think we need to review, we'll do that as well. And then in July, this is what I foreshadowed. Our recommendation to Superintendent McIntyre is to have the Community Engagement Director co-lead this work with the Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Achievement. And what I think we need to do is create a team to deliver areas of focus. One of the things I believe we learned during these last three months is because we were all working remotely, I think it was Patrick that led our community outreach work during these last three months. And I thought we did some really exciting work around partnering with transportation to get information, technology, meals out to families. We did some, Barb could probably speak to the great work that was done around translation and interpretation services because we dedicated a team to, people to work on that. So one of the ideas is to, especially if we're going to have a cost-neutral or low-cost approach this next year, it's going to be crucial for us to assign some folks who currently work in our system to be both the thought leaders and the action leaders around these steps in the upcoming year. I think this partnership with Michael takes advantage of the new Assistant Superintendent structure that Corey has moved to. And Michael, feel free to jump in at the end of the slide. I'd really appreciate it. And I also think this will ensure the work does not become siloed. So that's why I think we had both departments and sites fill out engagement goals. And I also think because of the areas that Michael will oversee, this also makes sure that we embed this engagement work in our learning and assessment teams, right, in some of our different areas. And last but not least, before Michael jumps in with a couple of his thoughts on this partnership, the whole purpose of this area, and in fact, in my opinion, of having an engagement plan in general is to ensure broad community representation and the voice of our students, families, and staff who is not, that is not currently amplified. So I, I was, I almost just had that sentence as its own slide. I think for me, this is at the heart of these efforts. And if we brought, I just wouldn't bring forward a plan that doesn't have that at the heart of it. I guess that's the short way for me to say it. Hey, Michael, do you want to jump in and share? I know we haven't gotten to meet a ton because you're obviously not in this role yet. But do you want to share a couple of the things that, your initial reactions when we talked about co-leading this together?
Sure. Thank you. And good evening, Chair Stoffey, Superintendent McIntyre, and school board members. I appreciate the opportunity to kind of get a jumpstart in our collaboration together this evening. So as Brian shared, we've had the opportunity just to connect just a few times as we kind of closed down the year and so forth. It was a busy time. But when he reached out with the opportunity to co-lead community engagement, family engagement, thinking about our, our social soil, where we are right now, whether we talk about the murder of George Floyd or we talk about COVID, there's a unique opportunity to be critically aware and intentional about how we roll out this family engagement going into the fall. We know that even in some of the conversations tonight, we've talked about trust. What are the opportunities for us to demonstrate our desire to partner with our families? That's going to bring about trust. We talked about potential attrition based on COVID and how soon or not families would be comfortable coming back to the school. The more intentional we are around building this family engagement, that obviously is going to help the, the trust and ultimately encourage families to come back into our system. So I think it's a really great opportunity for us to engage one another as we think about an equity standpoint. We certainly can leverage the human capital that we have existing within the Equity Department and the relationships and the work that's already been done. And as we think about achievements, there's no mistaking the, the connection between families engaged and student achievement. And so that's what we really want to leverage, and there's a unique opportunity to do this just based on where we are and excited to get started on it.
Yeah, thanks, Michael. I appreciate that. And also, just so the board knows, I've had a number of conversations with Dr. Revillström. And, and he, he's reports to Michael, and, and he's very excited about this work too. So these next two slides are really probably areas that will come up in my one-on-one interviews. And Michael, we, we haven't even talked about yet. Maybe it's Michael and I and the board members. We'll have to figure that out. But these are probably areas for you to think about that I think are potential focus areas. And a community outreach, what is our internal site and department support? I think it's going to be critical for us to review and hear from the Assistant Superintendents how successful our site and department leaders felt their engagement efforts were this year. You know, obviously, there were a lot of engagement efforts going on before COVID happened and some that happened after. I feel like, I joked with Corey, it feels like it's been two school years, to be quite honest. I think communication, this interpretation and translation focus, I think is, is important. I think we saw some levels of translation services that we don't typically get to provide during these last three months. And I, I would like to keep that momentum. And I also think, again, I'm bringing up voice because I think this is important, student and family voice, whether this is through virtual listening sessions. That's one thing I think you can do virtually at no cost. And maybe some virtual focus groups as potential. And these are kind of the, these are pretty broad tiers, but I, these are ones I think we need to consider. Kind of what is site work around engagement? What is district work around engagement? What is community-based work, community partnership? And then frankly, does the school board have a focus on what are some of the things that you would like to set as goals around your engagement efforts? So those are kind of tiers that I think we should consider. And then this is where you start seeing moving a little more into action steps. I recommend continuing to have engagement in our site and department continuous improvement plans. Think we need to create a multi-department work team to implement the recommendations from summer planning to ensure the breadth of this work across the school district. Determine scope and sequence of work based on fall opening plan. Again, to me, depending on how we open up this fall, the main tenants of engagement won't change, but perhaps the ways that we have to, that we deliver that engagement will change. And begin the work in earnest, in earnest as we kick off the school year. So again, summer 2020, develop districts' capacity to offer more interpreting and translation services throughout the year. A lot of those services take place onsite, so that's been a transition for distance learning. I think this can help with our site-based communication and onsite services. I also think it can help us with our district-wide communication. Determine some strategies for internal and external stakeholders. So this is, this section especially will be a part of my questions for you as school board members. Do you want to focus on enrolled families? Do you want to focus on broader community? What level of community partnerships would you like to see? And where would you like us to put our efforts? Oh, and I did remember, I did bold it this time. These steps are being done in an effort to ensure the voices of students and families are heard. That's just the key of this whole initiatives. And then I think in September and December, this speaks, I think, to the board's desire to say, what are our actual measured outcomes? So create a measurement rubric and action steps for engagement plan to present to the school board. And this would be our template for this school year and serve as a template for engagement in future years to ensure this work is embedded moving forward. I threw this last slide in here because it's kind of reflective. I don't know if you remember a year ago when we were talking about our priority result work. I mentioned that in 2017, I brought forward a proposal on behalf of the Engagement Priority Result Team to make a financial investment into this area. I know that at this time, the board is requesting some low to, to no-cost options. But I think this would be an example and having looked at a couple of other school districts that actually have an engagement team or an engagement department. This just speaks to some of my initial thoughts on the level of staff you might need to hire or might want to assign to this type of work, where they should report to. And the last dash line, I guess I call that, is focusing on areas where we are not getting the results we want from our annual surveys of students, staff and families. So actually too, this third one, affinity-based advisory council groups led by engagement team staff. Kelsey, in the letter, in the statements that you made on behalf of you and Jackie earlier, that sounds a little bit like what you were talking about with student cabinet or Black and Indigenous advisory groups that might be kind of cousins to that. But I, when you, when you read that, I, it made me think of, of this bullet point that I put in here. So with that, I'm going to end, that was pretty rapid fire, but I'm going to end this presentation. And Chair Stoffey, maybe you could help facilitate these next two questions. You know, what are some initial reactions to this planning proposal? And what three areas do you believe we need to focus on for the, you know? And maybe we can just focus on these two questions for the purpose of this work session, presentation, and we can go into more depth when we meet individually. So with that, I will end the formal part of this presentation.
Thank you, Brian. You know, with, with both of those questions and everybody here wanting to talk about all of that, I, I think a lot of the issues will be in our one-on-ones. I mean, there, there's a lot of things to take a look at. I mean, if we can go around and if we can try to re-brief with some of those comments because we have a lot more things that go tonight. You know, initial reactions. And then from there, we can set up the meetings with either Brian or Michael on both. And we can get more in-depth discussions that, that goes forward. So to kick things off, how about we start with Director Misscada Jones?
Well, you know, this is a love of mine. So just some initial thoughts off the top of my head. I, in your meetings, I would highly encourage that both Mike and Brian, which I knew where you were already going there, interview each of us and whether that is individual or in groups of two, I just find that brainstorming also helps in certain instances. I want to make sure that we put it out there that we have some serious trust work to do in our district with several of our communities. And so in our work, we have to be very mindful of what we need to do to go more than halfway to meet our families. People have been burned too many times and so that's a perception I'm getting from people. And so we need to make sure that we're going there. And I want to just elevate the ideas of affinity groups, parent and student voice, partnering with the Brooklyn Bridge Alliance for Youth and their good work. And elevating Black, Indigenous, people of color voices that have often not been heard loud enough. So that's kind of where I, just off the top of my head, I will have more when we meet.
Thanks, Jackie.
Director Dawson Walton.
Well, I'm very excited to see this plan, Brian. And I think it makes total sense to, I, I think it's really to work alongside with Mike Lehan because I, I think, you know, really goes hand in hand. I see engagement as like the, you know, to address our trust and then the disparities that we're experiencing in our district. I really think that how we engage is so important. I think I saw your tears on the different kind of tiers of engagement, but like it's for me and I know it will come out. I mean, I, every, any engagement is like an interest to really the board because we hear a lot of things that's not happening. You know, and I think we're gonna, I mean, in light of everything that's happened, you know, there is going to be more and more pressure to ask us, where is the community voice? And we have struggled with that since I've been on the board and probably before that. Just like, you know, and we've all identified the, even just kind of our process is a little like off in terms of getting the voice. I mean, just last week, SRO contract, perfect example, no community voice. And we're in that, we will need to be addressing that moving forward big time. You know, we've already had several emails. I just think a one piece that I just, just, I think we have to just in, in, in the plan, talk about the feedback. So what do we actually do with it and to ensure that it is? And that's, you know, the accountability there is really on the leadership team and administration to infuse what we're actually hearing to impact a policy, an initiative, whatever it is. Because that's, you know, on the front end, it's good, but then, you know, on the back end, that's where, you know, that's where the true, the trust is built. So I'm so excited. I think, I love seeing this on paper. I think that I'm excited that we can potentially get some things going by the fall. I mean, my big things are, I would love to see a student cabinet. I, I mean, I think it's just, we have to have that voice. And that's like a big priority for me. So, thank you.
Thanks, Kelsey.
Thank you. Next, let's go with Director Simons.
Yeah, I took a lot of notes, have a lot of questions, but I'll try to be respectful of our time and save some things for our individual meetings. First of all, Brian, congratulations on 10 years. That's super exciting and I hope we have you for another 10 years. And congratulations, Michael, on, on being promoted to this position. And I think the two of you in these roles are really going to accelerate us in this area. And it's, it's really fun to begin to see the ideas get put on the page as we've been talking about this for two years. And we've had, you know, it, it took us time with Superintendent McIntyre coming on board and getting the lay of the land. And, and then with all of the challenges of this year. And Kelsey, I remember when we were doing our candidate walks and we talked about kind of that low-hanging fruit, that, that the sister school ideas, that, that a lot of ideas that the board member had, board members have in this area and that being part of the process as part of our interviews for superintendent. So it's exciting to see this come to fruition. As far as low-cost or no-cost, Brian, I'm completely supportive of what we need to do in this area. If we need to redeploy resources from different areas, I just would ask you and Superintendent McIntyre to consider that. So given the budget reviews that we just observed earlier, you know, how can we prioritize funding in this area overall? And do we have maybe opportunities elsewhere as we think about what priorities come first? So just encourage you to think about that. And I do, I, I really appreciate that view of site versus district versus community versus school board, that tiered approach. I think that's spot on. And I think we're doing so much good work at the site level. But those, those, those ideas, those voices never make it to our level, never make it to the school board. So as we think about what's new or what's already in place that just isn't making its way to where it needs to go, that'd be, that'd be another place that I would encourage you to think about. Is it just, is it just lifting some of the filters maybe that exist in our system versus doing something completely new? And I do think while we have these items embedded in our site improvement plans, I would love the idea of pulling them out to be able to see them holistically. Because when we, when it's buried in those individual site plans, we don't, we don't really get to see across the district and see that, see what we're doing. Yeah, I just have a lot of thoughts on this and you know, we have a passion for it. So I'll stop there. But again, I just, I want Brian and Michael, I want you to hear that this is important to us. And you have my full support and I'm excited to talk with you more about what this means to me in particular.
Thank you, Director Simons. Director Douglas.
Yes, thank you. First, I just want to apologize, I lost video because my computer died. So I'm on my phone now. But anyways, I'm very excited about everything that has been shared with us. Brian, it's just, you can see that your heart is deeply, deeply invested in this through, through the work and the words that you've used to, to share with us the importance of this work. And I really loved how you highlighted over and over again, how important our community's voice is in this. But also I thought it was really incredible that you made a point multiple times throughout your presentation to encourage that, the, kind of what Tanya was saying, a more holistic approach where this is not silos. We're, we're working together, we're building a team of people who are from different departments to work together. Because in order to make transformational change, we all have to, to make changes and we have to do it together. And I really love that you have a phased approach where, you know, the, here are some low-hanging fruit. This is things that we can do right now. But I also feel pretty strongly that we use other resources when we can and where we can. And I don't know exactly what that might look like, but I know that, you know, working with Superintendent McIntyre and Ron and, you know, redeploying resources in ways that are innovative is not something that I would be opposed to. I would, I would strongly support the use of funds in different ways because I think that, like others have said, our community voice is so important. And we've been talking about this for a long time and I think, and I don't want to speak for anybody else, but I think as a board, we've been pretty clear that we don't want to talk about it as much as we want to just do it. And, and get the work done so that we can make the changes that need to happen. And I feel like there's a sense of urgency within our district and our community and this board to, to really rapidly progress this type of work. And I, I truly believe that if a child has a, their voice is heard and their, their learning is going to improve substantially just by fostering those needs. And I think that that's really, really important to our district's mission and vision. And so I just wanted to say thank you so much for all the work that you've done. And Michael and Brian together, I think you guys are going to be a phenomenal team in leading this work. And I, I really look forward to our individual interviews. We can talk about it further because I, I would talk about it all night. But in the interest of time and respect of everybody else's time and the board's time, I will leave it at that, but I just wanted to say I'm, I feel really empowered to, to do this work now. So, thank you.
Yeah, and quickly, just so the board members know, I, Tanya, I actually do have all of the site and departments engagement plans in one document.
Oh, good.
I'll share it with all of you before we meet in our meetings. And, you know, I know we're short on time, but I think like Kelly, Patrick, Michael, Laurel, all have been principals and they could tell you our sites do amazing stuff. It was fun to read their plans. It was fun to see how they, the activities they wanted. So I have, the way I have it summarized is the activities they said and how they were going to measure it, right? So that'll give you some better idea of, it was just too hard, overwhelming for me to put that all in there. So I just kind of wanted to give you a high level, here's kind of seven areas most folks focus on. So you'll get that before our meeting. So, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll add kind of one more question and comment. And kind of with that, being able to see across all of the different initiatives, how can we kind of learn amongst each other and kind of identify the best of the best to continue to bring up, to learn what should we do across the district as a best practice in this area versus what's really unique to each school and each of their, kind of their unique outreach in, in, in unique ways of connecting. And in a, I, I had noted, when I think about when I attended many of the Oseo events, just walking in and seeing the iPad surveys, attending the Oseo speaks. And there's just, you know, as, as board members, we're, we're kind of at different places at certain times. We don't necessarily see everything that everybody's doing. But I'm really excited of what I've seen from Oseo High School and what Michael's led there. And I'm hoping that we can take some of those best practices and ideas, and again, from every site and elevate those and learn from each other. And so we just, we need to carve out that time and I'm going to continue to ask that question. Do our leaders have that time to communicate with each other and share those best practices so that we can really bring that across our district? So, thank you.
Thank you, Director Simons. I think Director Douglas. When we hired Superintendent McIntyre, one of the hiring criteria was the engagement process, the parental and community engagement process. From the very beginning, this has been very high on our list of priorities. Again, things have gotten the way, but we are now moving forward. I personally, one of the, the things that I've done and the best things that I've done is to be able to drive around to every Turkey Bingo, Halloween Bingo, Spring Fling, Science Night, STEM Nights, Oseo Speaks and everything else that's gone on to try to sit down and meet people where they're at. You know, we've also in the past, we've moved some of our work sessions into different schools. So different people can get involved and we've done the, the other items. So this is indeed important and as Michael said, an engaged parent is a high predictor of student performance and success. And we want to have more of that. So, thank you. And with that, I'll leave that alone until we get together one-on-one and chat a little bit more. So, thank you very much.
I just, I, can I just say one thing? Sorry. I just want to, I mean, I am, I know we're going to have individual meetings, but I just, I have to just say that, I mean, if we're going to, oh, sorry, my thing is off. If, you know, when I look- If you know, when I look at what we talked about earlier, Lieutenant and Oliver's statements, it has to go beyond the turkey bingos. And I mean, that's what we're already doing and that's great. Um but I'm talking about how do we do systems change? And and you know, as we kind of get with each board member, I mean, I just think the only way we can, because one of the consistent themes are like, sure, we can do our surveys, but who's responding to those surveys, right? And so we gotta really get at the heart of like, if we're gonna be one district, if we're gonna elevate our voices, if Ed you know, equity is gonna be at the core and it it you know, and and addressing head on um racial disparities. And you know, we have to be really intentional and really go and I know I'm I know the board is, you know, we've talked about this. I just I just like have to like hit that home, you know, I mean, I think it's just so important. Um now more than ever, now more than ever, like when we, you know, I think about, you know, COVID nineteen and the social distancing and you know, when George Floyd was murdered, all the protests. And so but what it showed me was that like people need connection to heal, to be together. And I look at my family, I mean, we weighed the risk, right? Like we knew like, you know, there is a chance you go to a protest. It's like, you know, you you know, there you know, you could contract COVID. But you know, it's like, it's so important to be together as a community to address issues. And so um I think even more now than ever, um this is just so important. So I just I'm just so encouraged by everybody's comments and um I'm really looking forward to this. So thank you, um Brian and Michael.
Thank you. And you know, once once things open up, I mean, I can't wait to get back out there and talk and meet with people across this district. So I I I that's the.
We know you keep that mic close. Everywhere.
That's right. And I enjoy it. And uh that's that's a big thing. So I I I appreciate that. Uh with that, yeah.
Man, one more thing. I'm sorry, Terrell Stoffey. Um I'm sorry, you know, this is the you know, you know how we love this topic.
I'm trying.
Um just I do want to echo Kelsey's statements there. Um you know, listening is one thing, acting is another thing. And I and I think we've got um when we listen, but um and and this is this is part of what I do in 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 corp in my day job too. Like you you can't ask for people's feedback if you're not gonna act on it. So we we really I I think that's what I hear um Kelsey definitely saying. And I think that's what what all of us are saying and that's that's really want what we want to build into the plan.
Terrell Stoffey, I need to try to jump in if I have a.
Yeah, go right ahead. Everyone put their mic, put it on mute.
You know, I had the interview on this topic with all of you. And and we were at the doorstep of trying to launch this about three months ago. Once we, like I said earlier, trying to really evaluate. And from my lens, doing this well really requires an intentional, planful plan of action steps, right? So that we can and then also have accountability and measurement around, is it working? To Kelsey and Tanya's point, are we taking that feedback and input and connection into practice and changing uh our system? So hopefully what you see is an aggressive timeline to get that moving now that we we had to wait a little bit just to work through so many things this spring. And hopefully you see a bit of a different approach than what we talked about earlier in the year and really tapping into the resources across departments. So I'm excited for Brian and Michael and it's gonna take many others, honestly. Uh they'll need it, but it's gonna take up many others to to um move this forward and do things in a in a new way. So um I want to say thank you for your patience while we've gotten to this point. But you'll see in just a few, you know, short weeks, um some action steps quickly put in place.
Okay.
So Mike, it's Kelly.
Yeah, hey Kelly.
I'm losing my voice. Um I just wanted to piggyback on what Kelsey had said and to uh reiterate that one of the things that we work on with the principals that could also be really helpful to Brian and Michael already knows this is on their evaluation, one of the things, one of the indicators on their performance evaluation is around welcoming and honoring families and stakeholders by engaging them in a meaningful dialogue uh regarding student learning, the work of the school and its needs and accomplishments. And one of the things I know that we talk about with principals all the time is that is a really deep indicator. That's not parent teacher conferences because those might not be meaningful dialogues. It might be more of a one way uh sit and get conversation for our families. And so that in order to really excel in that indicator, it has to be really strategic, intentional and purposeful engaging of families in their students' learning and in the needs and accomplishments of the school. So that ties into everything. So that's some uh another lens that we'll be looking at it through.
Thank you, uh Kelly. And uh with that, uh you still have the floor Superintendent McIntyre. So we can go on to the opening of school update.
Hold on, I heard.
This is Jackie Moscata Jones, you know, me and my processing time, I need a little bit of.
Sorry Jackie.
Um I um I want to add that um as much as I really am super excited about this. That's why I'm having troubles um getting my words because this has been my passion and my PhD program and my master's program. So I'm a little over excited about the whole thing. Um I want to um encourage um that we also pull in some parent educators from our ECFE program um on whatever teams we have. Um just because of their education expertise and engaging parents. Um I want to encourage the um just reiterate the encouragement of um looking at the um recommendations that Kelsey and I put forth in our letter um that I think would really fit well with your um with your initiative. And um I also want to, if we can identify teachers in particular that are really good at um engaging families. Um I think one of the things that all of us on this board is really excited about as um uh Mike Stoffey said is we know that if um parents are engaged in their children's learning, that their children do better. And engagement looks different for different families and different for different cultures. So we need to um capitalize on teachers who've been successful in doing that and um have them be part of this process. So thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you Director Moscata Jones. Uh all other comments, save them for the one on one. So thank you. Uh with that, we will uh give Superintendent McIntyre the floor again or the screen as we talk about opening in the fall.
Thank you. So I know what time is running a little short here, but I'm gonna try to get uh some information in your hands here. Hopefully, can someone just confirm you can see this?
Can't see anything.
Can't see anything. No, okay. We'll adjust. One minute. All right, let's try this here. How about now?
Nope.
Okay, well, I can talk you through it in the interest of time and I'll send you this. You have the slides in your packet too. So really what I want to talk to you about is um the planning process we're getting into opening for the fall of next year. And the um team of about uh forty-five or so that started as our COVID nineteen crisis response team is now turn is now our fall twenty twenty-two uh fall twenty twenty planning team for the basically the next six weeks. And what we're working off of is the assumption that we won't get any clear guidance from the state until mid-July on what is expected. So we're getting out in front of that and running with three potential options that will occur for the fall. And I've had some conversations with each of you about this. But those three um potential ways of delivering school next fall would be some form of a remote or distance learning model if the virus continues to prevent us from being in buildings. The second one would be some kind of modified onsite in their in our schools um model or um a hybrid of both, as you've heard before. So some kind of potential rotation of students onsite, but then also distance learning in between if there's capacity limitations put on um the ability to use our facilities or even things like transportation in our buses and other kind of uh caps that could be put on there. We're also making sure we're thoughtful about any children or adults who can't come to buildings if they have risk of uh health issues with underlying health conditions or other compelling reasons to that degree. We're also working on how to ramp up our online or virtually provided instructional elements too. So the the slides that were in your packet really just show four main areas. And I can just talk you through it real quick. So our core team will be meeting Thursday as our first meeting. Uh we'll meet again June twenty-second and we'll meet again July ninth or tenth, one of those two days. There'll be four work groups that'll be meeting multiple times a week, probably two to three times a week to dig into what are our options for instruction when it comes to academic and social emotional learning? What do we need to do with those three potential options around operations? So when you think technology, facility, maintenance, transportation, food service, cleaning, all those variables that we need to plan for. We'll also have a team looking at stakeholder engagement and communication, um looking at how we are messaging and getting uh input on the fall. And we do have an a planned survey going out the back end of this month um that we can get back in early July to inform this group on what our families and our communities are looking for. I think it's pretty clear, we all want to be back in school. And that's our our hope is that we are fully back, but we will continue to plan forward with um these three options. The fourth work group is on budget, um time, you know, as far as staff time, our people, our our how can we utilize our people and under our collective bargaining agree agreements and also facilities. Each of our union leaders is a part of this work group so that we're working in partnership with our uh uh unions as far as how we make adjustments or plan for how we can deliver things. So the timeline again is launching this week. We have about a five to six week window here, four to six week window to come back to you. My goal is to bring you an update or a proposal potentially at the July twenty-first board meeting. It's it's highly likely we get guidance the week after that from MDE. So we'll still bring to you the work we've done. And hopefully, we're poised to activate any one of those three models depending on what what is giving given to us, whether there is a new executive order or no executive order or any new guidance from the state. We also will have uh a chance to um present to you the information that I'm gonna be sending you some of the reports that we had through our learning leaders. We've spent three half days with our learning leaders, a team, team of about fifty-five folks that have spent time looking at um how to take the learning we have from distance learning and apply that to the fall. And what were the lessons that we learned from that? What was the feedback that we we've been given across the system? How do we also utilize the uh surveys? We've had two distance learning surveys that we can use. And we'll have that third survey around fall opening. And that uh next survey is for families and staff so that we ask staff what their um input and needs are when we think of implementing this in the fall. So we have lots of data to go through. We've we've spent time with our learning leaders on assumptions and decision timelines. When do we need to be able to make certain decisions and have them be able to be implemented to launch in the fall? So as much as I'd love to say we would have a better uh timeline for you, um it's literally gonna take, since we just wrapped up last week's school, you know, the school year last week, we need the next four to five weeks to just uh accomplish putting together, here's a plan for distance and remote, um onsite and hybrid models and really flush out all the details there. So that is the short version of what's coming next. And I intend to give you weekly updates and my, you know, superintendent updates on the work that's happening as we get regular reports. Our steering committee is our cabinet. We meet every week. So that feedback loop happens weekly and then we work with that larger group. And pretty much every department um from operations to instruction is included in there. So we try not to miss any of the just all the moving parts it's gonna take to open the year and whatever model that is. And also being ready to whatever we open with could change as we get into the school year. We have to be ready for that as well. Just like it happened this year, we might open one one model and be forced into another model depending on however the virus, if it does morph. So um I'll pause there to see what kind of questions you have. I'll provide, you know, regular weekly updates on the work. And I wanted you just to have the framework of those work groups and the timeline of the work being done over the next five to six weeks. So questions from the board?
Thank you Superintendent. Um one question I have is how can we keep our parents fully up to date of what these plans may be? I mean, uh they have to make plans and their plans may not fit with what uh the current situation may allow us to do. So uh how can we ensure that uh you know, they have a voice in this? I mean, I know there's gonna be the uh maybe the survey, but how do we keep them informed as we go forward?
Yeah, and I I agree with Mike. That's the number one question I get asked is what's gonna happen in the fall? And part of me is, we have no idea. We have, we are planning for our options. Um but it's really gonna be dependent on the governor. But I want to hear the voices of our of our families and our parents and what what they are feeling and needing. Um we know that distance learning is absolutely no replacement for classroom instruction. Um and and that's just that's just reality and our teachers have been phenomenal in making this work. But.